I thought I saw Alderman Fisk online. All right, so we're gonna go ahead. What's that?
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say we have a call.
Yeah, we're gonna go ahead. Call the roll, please. You start with Alderman Braithwaite.
Okay, Alderman Braithwaite.
He just joined.
Alderman, Alderman Wilson? I'm sorry, Alderman Wen?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Here.
Alderman Suffertin?
Here.
Alderman Revel?
Here.
Alderman Rainey?
Here.
Alderman Fleming?
Here.
Alderman Fisk?
Here.
Alderman, uh, and...
I think that's it, because we started with Braithwaite, and he's here. All right, welcome, everybody, to the Monday, November 23rd, 2020 Evanston City Council meeting. We have all nine Aldermen with us tonight. Our first order of business is gonna be to suspend the rules allowing for remote participation. So I'm gonna ask Alderman Wilson if he would move this. Clerk Reed, could you mute?
I moved it. We suspend the rules to allow for us to conduct the meeting utilizing the Zoom software in lieu of an in-person meeting in accordance with the governor's prior directives related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Exactly.
All right, city clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Braithwaite. Am I muted?
Nope, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Oh. I just didn't hear Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru...
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
I didn't hear Alderman Braithwaite.
We lost him.
We lost you. Okay, so on a nine to zero vote, the Evanston City Council voted to suspend the rules to allow for remote participation, and that's because we're in the midst of the pandemic right now. So that passed nine to zero. We're now gonna move to any mayor announcements. I just have a couple announcements. First off, a happy early Thanksgiving to everyone. I know this year Thanksgiving's gonna be unlike any others, where we have big family and friends over to celebrate. This is a Thanksgiving where we're being asked to be just with our households, and I know that's difficult and lonely and all of that. But I would just ask everyone to continue to follow the public health protocols that are coming down from Governor Pritzker's office, from Illinois Department of Public Health, and from our own city of Evanston and the Evanston Public Health Department. The number of cases and the positivity rates continue to rise here in Evanston in the area. I'm not gonna do an in-depth review of the numbers this week. I did that last week. I will say, though, that today was our second highest day total since the beginning of the pandemic in terms of the number of cases. Today, we had 53 reported new cases. Our highest has been 60 cases, I believe. We still are, we didn't have any deaths, so that's good news. We still have 84 total deaths. Our seven-day positivity rate here in Evanston is 6.5%. The state's seven-day positivity rate is a little less than 11%. So one thing you may notice, if you've been tracking these numbers closely, our positivity rate is creeping up, and the states has actually come down. There was good news at the state level today. They only had 8,322 new cases and sadly 47 deaths, but that, you know, 8,300 cases is a lot less than 15,000 and 12,000, which have been numbers that we've been seeing recently from the state. The restrictions that are in place for pretty much all of the state and certainly in our EMS region 10 can make a difference if we all comply with those. So thank you for your vigilance. Do not get complacent and somehow think, well, Evanston's numbers have been better than, you know, our nearby neighbors, because I'm telling you right now, our numbers are creeping up and really jumping up. They're not even creeping. They're moving up really quickly, and so we cannot assume that we are any different than any other part of the state or any other part of the country. So please, please do your part. Wear masks, you know, socially distance, and in gatherings should, you know, be no more than 10 people. That's the max that's been put on gatherings now, and really should be outside if you're meeting with anybody outside your household. I know it's not easy, but the sacrifice will pay off, and we are getting good news on the vaccine front, and AstraZeneca today reported positive results on their vaccines. So now we have three major companies, Moderna, Pfizer, and the one I just mentioned, that have all, you know, shown really positive results with their vaccines. So that is, that is good news, but we just need to keep hanging tough here. Last on Thanksgiving is the Interfaith Action does a beautiful service every Thanksgiving, and it's a Thanksgiving Eve service, so it will be this Wednesday on November 25th at 7:00 PM, and I put information out on my mayor page, but we'll put it out on the city page as well, if you're looking for something to sort of get you in the mood for Thanksgiving and all the things we should be grateful for, even in this dark time that we're in. So that wraps up announcements that I have. A city manager, any announcements from you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no announcements.
How about city clerk? Any communications?
Yes, I have a number of communications. I'm a walk away from the house, but I have one announcement that I can make at this moment, and if I can have the ability to share screen, I just wanna talk about the candidate filing that happened that appeared that ended today. Luke, is that possible with you for my cell phone?
Yeah, you're, I mean, you're authorized to present if you need to.
Okay. All right, so it should be broadcasting now. Can folks see my screen?
Yes.
Clerk, in case you're talking, I just wanna let you know, we don't hear you. We see the screen, though.
I think we might have lost him.
I'm here. I think it's, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
I think it's because I connected to my Wi-Fi as I am home now, so it took me off there. So just to continue saying what I was saying, there we go. Should be able to see the screen now. We have three candidates to file to run for mayor, so that means we're in for a mayoral primary. We have two candidates who filed for clerk, so there is no primary expected there. Pretty straightforward. We concede a fifth ward for candidates filed, so as long as there are no objections and everyone makes it on the ballot, there will be a primary in that race as well as, that's it thus far, as far as the filings. Folks have five business days after the last day for filing, so that is to date, to file objections to candidates' petitions, so, and then that will trigger a process where the municipal officers' electoral board will gather to hear those objections. If you file simultaneously, we didn't have anyone file in the four o'clock hour, so there is no, there's no lottery for the bottom ballot spot, but there is going to be a lottery in some races for the top spot. We will send that information out to the public and to candidates when we host that lottery in early December. Is, there are a number of communications that we have received in the clerk's office regarding the budget, and we will forward all of those communications to the members of council. I think we have a lot of folks who have signed up for public comment today, and so let's use our time efficiently. All right, that ends my communication.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Clerk Reed. All right, we're now gonna move on to public comment. As Clerk Reed mentioned, we do have a lot of folks signed up for public comment. We have 36 individuals that have asked to speak tonight, and per our rules, we set aside 45 minutes for public comment, so I take the total number of people divided by the time, which means this evening, each person at public comment will get one minute and 15 seconds for public comment. We have had that before. We've, we've had it before. We had 80-something people speak at city council, so I know we can do that, but please be respectful that there are many people behind you that also wanna speak, and they will get a minute and 15 seconds, too. When you hear the timer go up, that means your time is up, and I need you to stop, and we need to move to the next speaker. So today, we're gonna start with Jacqueline Eddy, Bonnie Wilson, and then Trudy Davis will be our first three. I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. So welcome, Jacqueline.
Thank you. My name is Jackie Eddy. I live at 418 Church Street, and I've been a resident of the first ward for over 30 years. I strongly support the proposal for the development at 1900 Sherman. I think it's innovative and creative, and I think it takes us steps forward in our commitment to reparations. I believe affordable housing is one of the biggest levers that we have to be able to use, to be able to work in this area. I applaud your work to be able to move us this way as well, and I think we're a leader. We should stay that way. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Next speaker is Bonnie Wilson.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Wilson. I'm, I live in the first ward. I have, can you hear me? Okay.
We can. Welcome, Bonnie. Yep.
Okay. I've been a resident in Evanston for over 47 years. I've been a real estate agent for 35 years. I'm a senior real estate specialist and a past Evanston township assessor. As a Realtor in Evanston, I've been involved in affordable housing for the past 12 years through the Evanston Housing For All Committee, HRE Task Force Housing Committee, and the Joining Forces for Affordable Housing Committee. Last year, the HRE Task Force hired Sawgrass Partners to do a market assessment, to assess the market demand for affordable housing. The city, the study was funded by the city and the Evanston Community Foundation. In January of this year, our committee presented, made a presentation of this study to the city of Evanston, and the Sawgrass study confirmed the unmet need for more affordable independent living units at multiple income levels, including for seniors who are at 80% to 120% of the area median income. I'm very excited about the new development at 1900 Sherman, which would have over 51 apartments of affordable housing for seniors and others. Finally, after 12 years, I have seen there is light at the end of the tunnel for affordable housing in Evanston, and I fully support this new development and hope you support ordinance 109020. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you for your prior service. Next, we've got Trudy Davis, then John Moore, then Eric Passit. Are you with us, Trudy?
I don't believe so, Mayor, but we do have Minister Moore.
All right, well, welcome, John.
Thank you very much, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is John Moore. I've lived in Evanston for nearly a decade now, and I think of note, I was president of the Board of Directors of Housing Opportunities for Women for nearly a decade. I wanna talk for just a minute about 1900 Sherman Avenue. I think it's all wrong for the community. It's inequitable, and honestly, the proposal's changed so dramatically in scope since it was first proposed in 2018 that I think the city council needs to reject it at this time. And I live right next to the Victor Walter apartment, the Housing Authority of Cook County Apartment Buildings. I can see them right here as I'm sitting here. I support very much the mission of HACC for Affordable Housing, and yet, here, I think the Housing Authority has stepped way over the line of what's legal and in the public interest. You know, in seeking a major variance from the code, it's asking you, as the stewards of the public interest here, to look the other way, ignore our master plan and our existing code, which, you know, are the bedrock of thoughtful community development. As stewards of the housing code and for responsible development, I want to underscore the fact that this proposal has grown massively in size since it was first proposed and is completely contrary to our desire for livable communities. Even if the proposal did comply with the code, it would still be wrong, because it is not really a affordable housing development. Its proposal is, at this point, as I understand it, to mostly include market rate housing and apartments, which is contrary to the very law giving birth to the Housing Authority of Cook County. It is contrary to its mission of promoting affordable housing as its mission, as it's stated on the website, "economic opportunity and a suitable living environment free from housing discrimination." That is not what its current proposal does, and as much as I admire and respect Housing Authority of Cook County for its mission in general, this proposal is not good for the community. It's contrary to the mission. Thanks very much.
Thank you, John. Next up, we've got Eric, and then Polly Kuehl, and then Elliot Zation.
All right. My name is Eric Passit, and I'm a member of, I'm a citizen of the fourth ward, and I'm the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos. I wanted to speak on two subjects, and I'll make it very quick, and we have a lot of people there. The first one I wanted to say is I've been very deeply disturbed for a long time hearing, I kind of follow Evanston now and a lot of the local news around here, and I've just been very disturbed at the way local citizens have been treating our elected officials, mayor, just in general. It's been, it's been very deeply disturbing. I've been coming to this city council meeting for 25 years, and I've strongly disagreed with a lot of things they have done, but I never felt like we once treated them without anything but respect, and I've just been very deeply disturbed by that, I have to say. I'm not gonna go into each situation, but it's been very, it's been embarrassing, to be honest with you. But what I'm here for tonight is what I've been talking about for the last couple of months, is about small businesses, and to make it very short, I was hoping either the city manager or one of the Aldermen could reach out to me. I've come up with some, some, some really good ideas, but I think it's gonna take enormous effort, along with money, from either the city or the state or federal funding, and I think we're gonna need a real plan here to save our small businesses in Evanston. So I was hoping that somebody could reach out to me, and I could explain more to that on another time. I think it would just take up too much time here now.
Eric, thank you, and I know you've spoken on this before. I'm gonna have Paul, we'll have Paul Zalmazak, Erica.
I've actually already spoken to him.
Okay. He would be, it would be Paul or Roger Sosa at the chamber who are heading up a working group, Eric, that I have, that's part of the whole pandemic task force, and I'd love to get, have you get involved with that working group.
Okay, okay. I've spoken to him, but I was hoping to go another step further, but thank you.
Okay, I'll talk to Paul as well. I wanna make sure we get you involved. Thank you. All right, next up, we've got Polly Kuehl. I apologize, Polly, if I'm mispronouncing your last name. Elliot Zation, and then Joseph, Joseph, I'm gonna have trouble with your last name, Zaldowski. All right, so welcome, Polly.
Thank you very much. I'm Polly Kuehl. I'm a long-term resident of Evanston. I currently live within the sixth ward, and I wanna speak in support of the 1900 Sherman Avenue project. I also serve on the Housing Authority of Cook County Board of Directors, and I know the tremendous amount of work that's gone into developing the concept, the struggle of trying to balance the very difficult financing aspects of it, and Hack's mission of maximizing affordability in areas where it's very difficult, especially on the North Shore. Clearly, they've put their heart and their soul into this development, and it certainly meets their mission. I've also worked in the field of affordable housing for over 40 years, both in the development end and the property management end, and I know how difficult it is to truly meet the needs of those middle-income seniors that Evanston so desperately needs. Certainly, the great, one of the greatest needs we have is to meet those middle-income people who are above the eligibility level for subsidies, yet they can't afford to pay the market rents. This project has a creative way of meeting that need by having the market rate units that generate the internal subsidies that are needed in order to make those middle-income units affordable. And I challenge any other developer to provide as many affordable units in today's market and as beautiful a building and with as many amenities as 1900 Sherman will provide. And I hope that the city council can recognize that this property can offer Evanston and the seniors in Evanston a wonderful place to live and if they can approve the project. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Polly. Next, we've got Elliot Zation, and then Joseph S., and then Cecil McHugh.
This is Elliot Zation. Ken, have you heard? Am I heard?
We can hear you. Welcome, Elliot.
Okay, thank you very much. A group of us put together a presentation, and I hope that the order will be clear. We definitely are concerned about the 1900 Sherman proposal. I think it has many problematic aspects, and we'll try to show that. First of all, the process failed to give residents a meaningful opportunity to evaluate the project and to provide useful feedback. We'll hopefully have somebody who will speak to that. Close examination of the changes in the affordable units indicates that the latest version is actually a step backward, with fewer really affordable units being provided than earlier versions. There is a clear mismatch between the needs of Evanston's most housing-stress residents and what the current proposal offers. We hear much about how it's gonna provide units, but we don't hear much focus on the people in Evanston who need housing the most, affordable housing the most. The current project differs little from a number of recently privately developed projects, but asks for major concessions that are not offered to private developers. The really affordable units with the lower MIRIs result from Evanston's IHO requirements, while the missing middle units can be labeled as affordable housing only by stretching the definition. Hack's claim that only by significantly expanding market rate units can the project be funding seems questionable. There are alternative funding mechanisms that Hack has used in Evanston and elsewhere. Finally, many technical aspects of the final contract really need review before the city and the public really knows what's being agreed to. We should be aware that there are other ways to deal with making housing more available in Evanston, and so we ask the council to table this motion or send it back to the Planning and Development Committee and meet with staff and residents who are concerned, many of them who live right in the area, and work out a proposal that will do more for Evanston and perhaps less for Hack, but more for Evanston and what we really need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elliot. Next up, we've got Joe Seizdowski. Again, I'm sorry, Joe, for probably mispronouncing that, and Cecil McHugh, and then Claire Wastel.
Joseph, can you hear me? I'm not Joseph, but Joseph wasn't available, and I was gonna cover his section and my section.
All right, thank, you can, because I know you guys sort of broke this up, so go ahead, Cecil, then I'll allow that.
Thank you. A small thing, my name is Cecile.
Okay.
I'm a resident of the first ward, and I live within 500 feet of this proposed development. Residents of the first ward were not given the opportunity to provide feedback and ask questions regarding this proposed development. In June 2018, the first version of this proposal for an addition to Perlman Apartments, an 11-story, 80-unit, majority affordable, 100% age 55-plus households, 100% owned by Hack, was presented to the first ward. This is the version that many of the first ward and city residents still think is what's being developed or proposed to be developed. Almost a year later, in April 2019, a second version containing 120 units was proposed and possibly covered five months after that in September by a development project update agenda item for a first ward meeting. The development is probably now a standalone building. I'm pretty sure it's hard to keep track with all these different versions of this development. Then, over a year later, in September 2020, a third version of this development was to be presented to the first ward. Again, different height, different number of units, different mix of affordable for different income ranges. Notably, this is now a majority luxury building and not a majority affordable unit building. There was only a brief one-to-two slide presentation given on the development in which the C1A zoning change was not mentioned. It wasn't mentioned on the day this information arrived in my mailbox, and at this meeting, only one question was allowed and no discussion. This is huge. I cannot emphasize enough the impact of changing the zoning on nearly half of this block, the 1900 Sherman lot, to a commercial zone that allows commercially-sized buildings and potential commercial use on this half of that side of the block for really all the future. Although first ward residents have requested that Judy Fisk arrange for a community meeting to be held regarding this proposed development to allow discussion and questions and to provide feedback, there was no such meeting. On October 14th, 2020, at the second planning and development meeting, it was revealed by Hack that they had just found out that the building could only be a max of 80% age 55-plus households, and they had also just found out they needed to have a private investor because they were not allowed to own 100% of the venture. This is not okay, not acceptable, no discussion in the community about C1A, not 100% senior, and the fact that it's not 100% owned by Hack. That, that just can't be. I've heard that a good number of Perlman and Sherman Gardens residents are opposed to this proposed development. I heard there have been meetings regarding this proposed development at Perlman Apartments and at Sherman Gardens, but I don't hear the feedback of the owners, not the trustees of Sherman Gardens, but the owners, and I don't hear enough of the feedback the residents of Perlman Gardens give, or gave. I do hear that Sherman Gardens owners feel the building is just way too big for this residential neighborhood, that it will literally block the sun. Among the requests I did hear from Perlman Apartments residents were, residents with disabilities were requesting to be eligible for the units. Residents wanting to be able to use the amenities at this proposed development were requesting to do just that. Residents who have parking places were feeling they should be prioritized for the parking places in the proposed development. Have these and their other questions been answered? Action should not be taken on this proposed development without making sure these residents are heard and the residents of the first ward and of the city are heard. This application contains incomplete information. It contains inaccuracies. There's missing information, out-of-date information, and this application is not ready for action without the community input that has not been allowed to date.
Thank you. Thank, thank, thank you. Cecile, we're way over the allotted time.
Well, I'm so sorry. But could I wrap up with one statement?
One statement.
At the last Planning and Development Committee, one commissioner commented to send this back to the community. Please do send it back to the community and give us our right to provide input in this matter, which has such a big effect on many of our lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cecile. Next, we've got Claire Wastel, then Darlene Cannon, then Tina Foster. I'm gonna remind everybody, the allotted time that we have for each individual speaker is a minute and 15 seconds. If you can keep within that, if you hear the timer go off, I need you to stop so we can get to the next speaker, so we can get to everybody in the 45 minutes. So welcome, Claire.
Thank you. I live in the first ward and across from 1900 Sherman. The Perlman does not get described as architecturally significant, yet it is because the link building cited it to justify their height and density. Now, the link is being cited as a reason for a map amendment from R6 to C1A to bring commercial zoning to Sherman. Now, the Link is being cited as a reason for a map amendment from R six to C-one-A to bring commercial zoning to Sherman Avenue, but at Planning and Development, there was no discussion of that. C-one-A zoning, two and a half years ago, Alderman said should not continue to be used, might now expand to another street. In their two thousand and nineteen presentation, the Housing Authority showed the council that Evanston would receive sixty units designated missing middle. The vote should have happened that night because the sixty is now only seventeen. You would have gotten a seventy percent affordable building for Evanston. Now you're being offered the opposite, a seventy percent market rate building. Evanston does not need this flip in percentage. People need the city's priority, housing affordable at fifty to eighty percent AMI, and it is missing from this proposal. Their seventeen units are above the level in our IHO. Your packet tonight states the number of psych development allowances in association with the need for a map amendment would lend itself to an increase in the proposed public benefits. Please, I implore you, negotiate better for Evanston.
Thank you, Claire. Perfect timing there. All right, Darlene Cannon's next, then Tina Foster, then Bruce Enbok.
All right, thank you. Darlene Cannon, second ward. I'm speaking tonight against the Emerson. Residents who live in the Perlman face a number of difficult issues, from congestion, from parking, to them not receiving proper notification related to the building, and them also being able to have priority as far as being able to move over to that building. Let's see, the marginalized residents of the Perlman that fear are in fear of possibly being threatened with evictions if they choose to advocate for themselves against the Emerson. In Evanston, the residents whom are in dire need of housing, which are mostly black and brown and low-income families, are in need of three bedrooms, and yet they are purposely being ignored and/or overlooked over and over again. Why is no one advocating for these families? People need advocacy and government that reflects their needs as opposed to appropriately appropriating equity as performance. I'm asking folks to specifically vote no to the zoning amendment. This amendment will not support families that are currently being pushed out of Evanston, zoning allowances such as the Emerson, Albion, and the Avidor that ultimately displace minority families with high price tags. Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene. Next up, we've got Tina Foster, then Bruce Enbok, and then Sandy Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Tina Foster, a fifth ward resident. I'm asking you to vote no on the current HAC proposal. This project does not adequately address the needs of our current and most vulnerable residents. Micro and one-bedroom units at seventeen hundred dollars do not address the needs of families, and they are not affordable to our low- and fixed-income residents. People that can afford to pay seventeen hundred dollars for housing can find housing in many areas of our community, but children experiencing a lack of stable housing, lack of stability and support needed to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally, and our low-income, fixed-income, long-time residents are being forced out. And for these reasons, I ask that you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Next up, we've got Bruce Enbok, then Sandy Wilson, then Mary Rosinski. Welcome, Bruce.
Good afternoon or evening. Although this project originally set out to be and was presented many months ago to be an affordable housing project, it no longer is. What was originally a thirty percent market, seventy percent affordable project somehow transformed to become a seventy percent market, twenty percent affordable project. The ten percent missing middle does not qualify as affordable under our ordinance. Only twenty percent, or thirty-four, not fifty-one, units are affordable as defined by and is already required by our city ordinance. Accordingly, rather, it not only masquerades as an affordable housing project, having somehow morphed into what can only be described as a normal, everyday residential project subject to complying with our affordable housing ordinance. It's now known different than the Avidor or the Albion or E-two and should be treated as such. It is not...
Can't hear you, Bruce. I think you might have frozen up there. Luke, what do you think, Luke? It sounds like he's frozen there.
I think that's correct. Maybe we can go to Ms. Wilson and come back.
So let's go to Ms. Wilson, and then we'll go back to Bruce and give him thirty more seconds. Welcome, Sandy.
Thank you. Good evening. I live in the first ward, and I'd like to ask the council to vote no. The Housing Authority of Cook County has access to tax credits for building affordable housing that meets HUD standards. Tax credits are being used elsewhere to build affordable housing. In fact, an amazing project has just launched on Howard Street that provides fifty-one units of true senior affordable housing. It involved Housing Authority of Cook County and many other partners to produce a beautiful building that did not overwhelm the zoning code or set a precedent that is unacceptable. The Housing Authority of Cook County also secured funding for another project in Chicago Heights that offers a hundred units. Why is that not possible here? HAC hasn't provided a cogent rationale. The claim that the proposed project represents an innovative approach to mixed-income housing is dubious because the majority of the units are likely to go to middle and upper-middle-income individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. We're going to go back. I see we've got Bruce. We'll give you thirty more seconds, Bruce. You cut off about the thirty-second point.
I don't know what happened. I'm having a technology day.
No worries.
Just to finish up, further, we cannot be supportive of our federal and county tax dollars being used for what amounts to a speculative luxury housing development. This is not an activity we should want our government entities and agencies to be involved in. It is not the purpose for which this agency was created, and our city should not have any part in greenlighting or enabling activity. Accordingly, we'll use common sense as well as abide by our zoning code and reject this project as currently planned. Thank you. Sorry about the glitch.
No worries. Thank you, Bruce. Next up, we've got Mary Rosinski, then Claire Kelly, then Diane Goldring.
I want to speak about the affordable housing element of this project, and I think Evanston can do a lot better than this. I think there's other alternatives we can go to. We can work with our local landlords who have two and three units. I've been looking at this for a couple of months, about a year now, and what's bothered me most about the affordable housing formula we have in Evanston is that the AMI for white people is about eighty-eight thousand dollars, and the AMI for black people is about forty-five thousand, so the median comes to about seventy-three thousand. So when we start coming to an area where we're saying we're going at fifty percent, that is only the top end of our black community. And so if we truly have an effort to keep our community open to everybody and affordable to everybody, we need to revisit that, and this program doesn't even allow that. And I also want to point out that aside from the race issues and the equity lens on that, we also have the issue of families. And if, like, I know, my daughter and I take care of my mom. These bedrooms studios and one bedrooms, what if there's seniors that need a person living with them? How does this help? And I have to tell you, I looked at the multiple, I'm a realtor, and I look at the multiple listing services, and, you know, there are four hundred and seven opportunities for someone who's going to pay up to twenty-five hundred, but someone who can only pay thirteen fifty is fifty opportunities. And these rents and this missing middle, I think it's way too high for too few people. So I'd like us to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we've got Claire Kelly, then Diane Goldring, then Mike Vasilko. Welcome, Claire.
Hi. So this proposed development is simply way too high, too many stories. A building this large here is going to destroy the residential feel of this area. Residents, including Perlman residents, chose to move into this area, into this R six residential part of town. And even as Alderman Fisk herself said, with reference to the Link, not this one, mind you, but to the Link, that development, when they wanted this, the high rises shouldn't cross the Emerson, Emerson, that they should not be on the north side of Emerson, that this is outside of the downtown area. This is, and what they are now proposing, this one hundred and sixty-eight unit building is not a revision or tweaking of the original eighty-unit plan, which were mostly affordable housing units back then. This is an altogether new plan, and the residents of this area should be afforded a community meeting to weigh in, which they have not been. And please, enough with the disingenuous argument that the only way to provide affordable units at this particular HAC location is to drastically increase the market rate units to a hundred and seventeen units. This is in a TOD location, and according to Ida, it is either in or adjacent to an opportunity area. That means that this project would receive more points when assessed for light tech credits. As a housing authority, HAC has a leg up on other applicants for light tech credits. Go back to the original plan of eighty units, giving us more affordable housing units. Use those light tech credits, lower the height of the building, give us a win-win for everybody, a win for affordable housing and a win for the residents. Apply for the credits, do what's right by Evanston residents who live in this area. Additionally, I have to say the optics of this process in terms of governmental ethics are simply not good. Everyone sitting at the dais should easily understand this. In the middle of a proposal by HAC and its zoning development private partner, Camrose, in the middle of the application process, the principal consultant for Camrose and a very close friend of Alderman Fisk was appointed to the plan commission, right when the plan increased to, when it was just about to increase to a hundred and sixty-eight units. It is the responsibility of our government officials to avoid at all costs the appearance of unethical behavior involving conflicts of interest. It is the appearance that you must avoid, the appearance of conflict of interest. Recusal is irrelevant at this point. Ms. Lindwall could have been appointed or should have been appointed either before the process began or after the decisions were made on this proposed development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we've got Diane Goldring, Mike Vasilko, then Pat Effiem.
Good evening. I'm Diane Goldring, a fourth ward resident. I'm speaking in opposition to the nineteen hundred Sherman Avenue proposed development. You may wonder why, as a fourth ward resident, I care about this project enough to speak out against it. Since mid-March, I've had the opportunity to deliver free meals to lower-income seniors, including some in the Perlman Building. You'd think I'd be stating the obvious when I say that these seniors are people with thoughts and opinions that deserve to be treated respectfully when developing a project that will impact their lives. However, you aren't treating them as such. This development is so different from what was originally proposed and so far out of scale that it should be considered an entirely new project, which would require starting over with community input. Others have talked about the percentage of market to affordable, how the percentage of market to affordable units have flipped. If the numbers didn't work for more affordable units using mostly conventional financing, don't try to fit a square peg into a round hole. Finally, about the term "missing middle", the mayor and others praised this development for meeting demand for, quote, "the missing middle." At the April two thousand and nineteen council meeting, Sarah Flack said, and I quote, "The important thing is the middle." In fact, the term "missing middle" does not refer to an income level. It refers to a type of housing, namely house-scale developments with multiple units in walkable neighborhoods suitable for moderate-income families. Emphasis should be on house-scale and moderate-income families. Townhomes, duplexes, and fourplexes are examples of missing-middle housing. A senior high-rise is the very antithesis of missing-middle housing. So by the mayor's own standards, this development is not what Evanston needs, and the zoning should be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Next up, we've got Mike Vasilko, then Pat Effiem, then Benjamin Kropuz. Apologize for mispronouncing that. Mike?
Mike Vasilko, sixth ward. This council's actions over the past three and a half years have been consistent and have memorialized your term as a group, as the Tax and Spend Council. That's simply just what you have done. Each of you have a voting record of spending recklessly, putting Evanston in such deep and confusing debt that our CFO can't or won't tell us exactly what the total city debt really is. Your voting records will speak for themselves in the coming months. I assume this budget discussion will go on till next week because there are still unanswered questions. At the last city council meeting, the city manager said she would issue a budget memo summarizing potential full-time and part-time staff cuts. These are staff positions that are filled. In addition to those vacant positions that we keep putting in our budgets, that she has cut, but she said she would issue a memo, which I have not seen. I haven't seen posted as a budget memo, and I don't know if she's submitted something internally, but that memo has not been, has not shown yet to the public. It was to include salary cuts or staff cuts, a benefit cuts in lieu of the proposed four-point-five percent tax levy increase. The staff reduction memo has not been issued to the public, if it exists. Why are salary increases being proposed for some staff? Why are new hires being proposed in this budget? You know, the budget document has been shown to be littered with mistakes, and you're being asked to approve it. We need another week to go through and get answers to our questions. In particular, in my case, it's the question about proposed staff cuts. And by that, I mean not the people who actually do the work, but the people who sit at their desk and push keyboards all day, the administrators, who, we could use a few less of those. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, we've got Pat Effiem, then Benjamin Kropuz, then Bill James. Welcome, Pat.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Pat.
Nice to see you all. Thank you for the continued work, good work that you all do. Tonight, I come on behalf of Evanston Own It. We have certainly appreciated the opportunity to be thought partners with you, and tonight we come to lend our voice to the conversation about the Emerson at nineteen hundred Sherman. As black faith leaders serving the fifth and second wards, we see and serve those who are most profoundly affected by the lack of affordable housing. Sadly, the issue of housing is a byproduct of systemic inequity. The lingering effects of racism continue to perpetuate disparities in critical areas such as affordable housing. Reversing the impact of historical racism is not easy, and it requires making hard but necessary decisions. We acknowledge that fifty-one affordable housing units is a drop in the bucket, but for those who are struggling to survive, it is a step in the right direction. Tonight, we ask you to make the hard and necessary decision to prioritize affordability and racial equity and vote yes to the Emerson. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. All right, next up, we've got Benjamin Kropuz, Bill James, then Mary Beth Roth. Benjamin, are you with us?
I don't believe so, Mary.
Okay. How about Bill James?
I'm here, but my associate Ben Kropuz mistakenly signed us both up to make comment. I represent the Housing Authority, and I'm here to represent them if need be when it's time for the applicant to speak.
All right, so you don't have anything to add right now at public comment, then. Okay. So when we get to the item, if it's pulled off the consent agenda and we talk, and there's any questions, we might have questions for the Housing Authority at that point. Thank you, Bill. How about Mary Beth Roth?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak in front of you tonight. I'm a resident of the second ward, and I am a volunteer for Interfaith Action of Evanston. We've run the Produce Mobile in Evanston for eight years. We deliver about, distribute about seventy tons of fresh vegetables and food to area residents in need. But since COVID, everything about the Produce Mobile has changed. And I just want to thank some of the city employees that have been really supportive of us and made this fly through COVID. Lawrence Hemingway, Director of Parks and Recreation and Government, I'm sorry, Community Involvement, recruited City of Evanston employees and staff, including himself, and Anne Marie Heiser, the manager of Robert Crown, to actually replace volunteers when the Greater Chicago Food Depository told us we could not have volunteers over sixty-five years of age for several months, and that was most of us, of course, and they stepped in with city employees and staff to carry on the distribution of this important food. A big challenge we had was establishing a drive-up distribution, which we've never had before. People have always walked up. And I can't thank Mike Rivera enough. He's the interim director of City of Evanston Parking Services for making a tra- He's the interim director of City of Evanston Parking Services for making a traffic plan to keep the cars from lining up on Dodge and all the way up Oakton to Aldi's one month. And then providing two helpful staff members, Nathan and LaShawn, that help now stage the cars so they're in Levy Center area and James Park areas that don't block traffic. Amy Kellogg is a star, the manager of Levy Center, and her staff have been so helpful to us. I know it is really inconvenient for the Protus Mobile to distribute this food at Levy Center and yet she's been helpful in every possible way. Back to Lawrence Hemingway, who's had awful lot on his plate, as we all know, the last several months. And I just want to thank him for being so supportive of the Protus Mobile here in Evanston. He's very busy, but he's spent time with me. He's been patient and helpful in many ways. Without these really wonderful city employees, I think it would have been very difficult, possibly impossible, for a few months to distribute the several thousand pounds of food we distribute every month. The city's been a wonderful partner to us and I've gotten to work with several city staff members who I didn't know before and I've really enjoyed working with them. That's all I have to say. I could say a lot more, but I would like to wish everybody a happy COVID-compliant Thanksgiving. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mary Beth. And thank you to you and all the volunteers and everyone that has put on the Protus Mobile. It's been, it's been a wonderful thing in a really difficult time for a lot of people. So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Next up, we've got Jamie Collier, Jim Young, and then Sean Isles, another person that's involved with Protus Mobile. All right. Jamie, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and others attending this meeting. Over the past two weeks, many council members and others have suggested ways that the proposed 2021 budget could be trimmed in order to avoid a property tax increase or fund different budget priorities. Many of these suggestions and proposals are still outstanding. For example, how the Good Neighbor Fund will be allocated, using more bond funding for large vehicle purchases instead of current income while postponing non-critical capital projects. Assessing where it's likely to be, there's likely to be underspending in the 2021 budget, for example, in fuel purchases and employee turnover, instead of explicitly budgeting to increase general fund reserves. Increasing the amount transferred to the general fund from the parking water sewer and at least one tip fund, amounts that have remained the same since 2019. Alternate approaches to funding the city pensions that don't further burden the property taxpayer. And as a last resort, assessing the impact of extending staff vacancies in order to reduce 2021 expenditures. It would seem prudent to allow more time for these proposals to be solidified, so I would advocate that action on any proposed increase to the property tax levy be postponed to the council's next regular December meeting. On the other hand, it also seems that some combination of the suggestions that are on the table would save at least $2.5 million and the council could move to approve a no increase in property tax levy tonight and allow staff to work out the best way to balance the budget for discussion at the December meeting. I thank you all for your efforts in this difficult time.
Thank you, Jamie. Next up, we've got Jim Young, then Sean Isles, then Amy Morton, and then John Duncan. Welcome, Jim.
Yeah, hi. Thank you very much. This evening I heard comments about housing affordability. I heard comments about food insecurity. And I am tonight advocating for a zero, not a zilch, increase in property taxes this year. I think that there are measures that the city council has taken, which I really applaud, to reduce the proposed increase to $2.5 million or 4.5%, but you know what? We're not there yet. Let's get across the finish line. Let's have a 0% increase. This can be done. It can be done very easily when you look at the reserves the city has. And I have sent an email out this afternoon to the city council members and the CFO and the city manager, which outlines how this can be done. In addition to that, I think that there are other rocks that should be overturned. Every and every, every and any effort should be made today to not have to raise taxes in this environment that we're all experiencing. This COVID recession has had devastating impacts on lots of families. People have lost jobs. Salaries are down. And the challenges that they're facing, we as a community are facing, I think really warrants some extraordinary measures being taken by city council. So thank you very much for listening. Thank you very much for reading the articles that we've written and I appreciate your time and efforts.
Thank you, Jim. All right. Next up, we've got Sean Isles. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you. And I'd like to second what Mary Beth said with the appreciation of the city staff helping with the Protus Mobile. But I'm here tonight as the current president of the Evanston Public Library Board of Trustees. And I'd like to talk about the library tax levy that I believe is SP4 on your agenda tonight. So in response to the pandemic, the EPL has provided services remotely and virtually, including new approaches and the reimagining of popular programs, including Storytime with favorite librarians and book clubs. So for those of you that don't know, the Evanston Public Library, three cents of every property tax dollar paid in Evanston. And so some of the highlights of what we were able to do in 2020 with that are the opening of the Robert Crown Branch Library, the establishment of the Collection Advisory Committee, piloting the laptop and Chrome Book Lending Machine, creating an electronic library card, instituting fine-free policy, a fine-free policy. We've also expanded family engagement through the creation of a bilingual family engagement coordinator and a family engagement coordinator focused upon service to our Black families. So there's a lot of, a lot of things we've managed to do in 2020 and I just picked out a few. But our 2021 proposed tax levy remains at the same level as 2020. So despite the challenges of 2020, we've managed to keep our tax levy flat. And in 2021, our plans reflect our continued commitment to equity and include some of the following new initiatives. We have a pilot program for the transportation of library patrons and materials. We've got another pilot program for, that will provide virtual community meeting rooms. We're exploring the purchase of a book and tech mobile. And we are, finally, we are embarking on a robust strategic planning process where we're going to engage with the community and factor their thoughts into what we're doing going forward. So thank you for your time tonight and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you for all your service around Evanston, including on the library board. Next, we've got Amy Morton, then John Duncan, and then Tricia Conley. Do we have Amy with us?
You're muted, Amy. Can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Alderman, everybody who's listening. I'm Amy Morton. I have several restaurants here in Evanston, actually three. And I've lived here for 13 years. I've been in business for eight. And I have been a massive proponent of the city. You guys are incredible. I couldn't say enough about it. I was so happy to hear about the affordable housing conversation because it is a separate reason why I'm talking, but I, I so stand for affordable housing and equity amongst all. I am here to talk about the restaurant industry amidst COVID. Personally, after all the cheerleading I've done for the city, I am here to rattle a cage. I've never done this before. Restaurants are dying. We're going to lose over 60% of them throughout the country. Everybody knows that. Since Found opened eight years ago, over 50 restaurants have opened and we have brought in a lot of money for Liquor Tax. And in the early days and whenever, you know, I had needed something, people have been wonderful and I've, you know, one hand washes the other. I made two really fantastic proposals to the city to get a tent for Found, my restaurant on Chicago Avenue. And I was rejected without a phone call, without a suggestion of how we could meet in the middle, without any communication, and it was rejected within minutes of making the proposals. Cade, the gentleman I worked with, was amazing, but I am so disappointed with the lack of creativity, support, and collaboration right now with the city. Early on in COVID, we got offered, restaurants got offered the library parking lot, which was very nice, but how do we get food three blocks away? And coming back to equity, it's not fair just for people who have an outside space or private. Everyone needs to stay open. The city of Chicago has done so many creative things and I do not understand the fear that Evanston has to support and allow people to operate. I mean, even Chicago Avenue, we could say we're only parking on one side of the street this winter or had been this summer. So everybody got a chance. So I am bringing this forward because it's important and something has changed and I don't know what it is. And I would love to speak further on it and thank you. And have a wonderful Thanksgiving and everyone stay safe.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy, for all that you've done and thank you for coming here and sharing that. Erica Storley, the city manager who's listening, I'm going to ask if she would give you a call tomorrow or Wednesday to talk further about this. This is very important to all of us. All right. Next up, we've got John Duncan.
Hi there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is John Duncan. I'm a resident of Glendale, Illinois, and I worked in Evanston at a law firm there for a number of years before I became the, in my current position as General Counsel of the Housing Authority of Cook County. I'm going to leave it to Rich Monacchio, our executive director, to speak later as to the 1900 Sherman Project. But there are a couple of legal issues that were addressed here and I thought I should comment on those. One of the commentators, I think it was Cecile mentioned, she was concerned that the proposed project is not going to be 100% owned by the housing authority. And I can tell her that Illinois state law, the Illinois Housing Authorities Act prohibits the housing authority from being a 100% owner of a project of this type. Instead, we have, we are required by state law to have a partner and the partner will be having a 1% interest in the 1900 Sherman Project. Another commentator mentioned that there was some fear of the Perlman residents of retaliation and if they spoke out against the 1900 Perlman Project. I want to reassure them, everybody at Perlman and all of our properties, that we don't reta, we don't tolerate retaliation. And if, if anyone feels concerned about retaliation, I want to hear about it because we'll address that internally at the housing authority. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Next up, we've got Tricia Conley, then Sarah Bogan, and then Ray Freeman. Do we have? Oh, hi, Trish. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Clerk. Tonight I'd like to speak about P3, the proposed building at 1900 Sherman. We've seen this project go from a mixed affordable housing project based on lower-market AMIs to considerably less than that in the most recent update. I'm going to ask tonight that each of you that represents us here in Evanston, ask some critical questions of Hack and ask them to back up what they're telling us with some evidence. We had an opportunity for a project that would have provided 80 units of affordable housing. Why are we settling for less on publicly-owned land? Now we're down to 51 units. And I think I'm being a little kind by saying that there's actually 51 in this case. Yes, this is more than we've offered with other for-profit entities involved here in Evanston, but the folks sitting on housing lists or who are currently living in a far western suburb somewhere while they wait to get placed deserve an explanation. And you know what? So do all the taxpayers. We can do better. Don't just ask the representatives from Hack to answer questions. Ask them to show evidence that their original plan is not possible. They can't secure funding? I question this and I hope you do too. They have a good standing in the state and bargaining for this project shouldn't be an issue. Please use your leadership to make further demands. We have the potential to make this a reality. At least 29 more units of much-needed housing provided by a tax-funded organization rather than accepting less from a for-profit developer. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we've got Sarah Bogan, then Ray Freeman, then Robbie Marcus.
Hi, my name is Sarah Bogan. I'm here on behalf of Evanston Fights for Black Lives. The last couple of days, we've spent time visiting each of the Alderpeople's houses. I would like to say thank you to those who did come out and speak to us. It's a much easier form of communication and it was nice to actually get to hear your thoughts. Unfortunately, I'm, we're very disappointed in the fact that many of you are going to vote yes on this budget, which does very little to actually decrease the funding for the police. And while we appreciate the effort in the alternative policing strategy and committee, there's not nearly enough funding to make it actually effective. And we would hope that those of you who do get reelected, that you can commit to a way more serious commitment of defunding Evanston Police Department for your next term.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, we've got Ray Freeman, Robbie Marcus, and then Gabe Karsh.
Mayor, I don't believe Ray is on.
Okay. How about Robbie Marcus?
He actually asked to be removed.
Okay, so he's no show. Okay. How about Gabe Karsh? And then we've got Abigail Aziza Stone. And then I've got Sue Lalabac, Brenda Greer, and then Kira Kelly.
Hi, my name is Gabe Karsh. I'm a senior at ETHS and a third ward resident. Even as Evanston has hired a new police chief, increased racial diversity on the force, and done more training for officers, the police department's actions have continued to disproportionately affect our Black community, with the city's website showing that Black people have made up 63% of arrests since September 2018 and only 18% of the population. Trent Hunt, a Black man, was arrested earlier this year for filming a traffic stop, but perhaps most telling has been EPD's handling of the recent protests at Northwestern. On Halloween, Northwestern student protesters, led by Black students, were pepper sprayed by Evanston police officers along with officers from the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System. The police claimed that there were bricks and rocks thrown at them prior to their use of force, but the reporter from the Daily Northwestern, who was the only reporter there that night, has not corroborated that claim, even saying recently that none of the seven sources she talked to who stood the police line that night saw any bricks or rocks being thrown. Her reporting suggests that it was in fact the police who escalated the situation by kettling or surrounding the protesters before using pepper spray. This tactic was not meant to disperse the rowdy crowd or keep the peace. It was meant to cause harm. The students were trapped with nowhere to go when pepper spray was released. I get that a lot of people are upset with the way some protesters have behaved, but vandalism simply does not justify violent retaliation from the police, especially when vandals and non-vandals alike are targeted. EPD has shown it has deep problems. Reform has not worked thus far, yet the proposed budget for this year would give nearly $40 million to the police department, virtually the same as last year, and only $200,000 to explore emergency response alternatives to police. I urge you to vote no on the budget tonight, commit more resources to policing alternatives, and cut EPD's budget by much more than the modest amount proposed this year because its funding goes towards the brutalization of Northwestern students and it affects the targeting of our Black community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gabe. Next, we've got Abigail Aziza Stone. Is it Abigail?
Hi.
There you are.
I'm here. My, my son's name is Judah. I didn't know how to fix that. And I really wish that my camera would be enabled, please. I want everyone to see that I am a strong Black woman and a symbol of resilience.
Is your, Abigail, or Luke, are we not able to see Abigail because on our side or is it just, is it her side? There you are, Abigail. Now we can see.
Hi. I really appreciate this opportunity to speak and I'm so thankful to see all of you all. God bless you. You've all been doing a great job under the worst circumstances ever and I respect and appreciate you. And, and it's such a blessing to see you all. Please stay safe and please, may your family be blessed, may you all be blessed. Okay, so I'm Abigail. Like I said, I am Black. I'm also a former resident of the fifth ward and the eighth ward. And ironically, I was moved out And ironically, I was moved out of Evanston due to the lack of affordable housing. So although I, in my heart of hearts, I wish that there was more affordable units in the proposed, in this 1900 Sherman building, I'm so thankful that there will be some. And I am in favor of this building. I am a client of Connections for the Homeless turned board member and I'm also on the board of the Alliance to End Homelessness in North Suburban Cook County now. So I'm on two boards of directors. And I'm part of Joining Forces for Affordable Housing with Connections. And I have seen really the crisis that the lack of affordable housing is causing in Evanston and surrounding areas. I live in a, a private undisclosed location in a nearby suburb. But I spend most of my time, my energy and my heart is in Evanston. And as a person who considers myself a servant of the community, I would love for the board to vote yes on this building. The need is unfortunately more urgent than many people know and we need as much affordable housing as we can get. And so I really thank you for your time and, and that is all that I have to say regarding that.
Thank you, Abigail, it was so great to see you. All right, next, next up, we've got Sue Lalabac, then Brenda Greer, then Kira Kelly.
Great, good evening, everybody. My name is Sue Lalabac, I work at Connections for the Homeless and Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. Many Joining Forces members spoke about the 1900 Sherman Building at the last P and D meeting and many of us have sent emails this week so as not to take up excessive time tonight. Our communications have outlined our support of the Emerson and our knowledge that most of the objections to it can be addressed with complete information and good planning processes. Tonight, you have a decision to make that pits two facts against each other. The first fact is that according to Evanston's consolidated plan, approximately 8,000 moderate to low-income renting households are paying more than 30% of their incomes on rent. The affordable housing in the proposed Emerson Building is therefore of incredible value. It's just a drop in the bucket, but it is a start and it is real affordable units that would come online. The second fact is that some Evanston residents believe that the Emerson Building, under discussion tonight, is too large. Their distress about the size of the building is real and they've done a good job of expressing it. These facts together make your choice tonight a difficult one. It pits residents in dire need against residents who are sincerely pained by the proposed change in the neighborhood in question. Choosing which residents you're going to support and which changes you champion is thankless work. We hope that you will choose the change that benefits the greatest number of people most significantly. I also want to mention that another group is raising concerns that the Housing Authority is not doing enough. While we would love to see more, we fear that Evanston is in danger of paralysis from striving for an ideal that doesn't exist. We need to be using every tool we have. The Housing Authority is trying out a new and innovative solution to add to our arsenal of affordability tools. We need to embrace this opportunity, to learn from it, and then to build on it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Sue. Next up, we've got Brenda Greer, then Kira Kelly. Is Brenda Greer with us?
I don't believe so, Mayor.
Ms. Greer asked me to sign her up, but I have a hunch, it sounds like maybe it did not work.
Okay, thank you, Sue. All right, then.
Excuse me, would it be possible to take Brenda's place for just a sec? I'm so sorry to bother you, but I reviewed and there were two very important points that I didn't.
I'll let, I'll let you go ahead and do that, Cecile.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I wanted to say that Evanston residents will not be prioritized for these affordable units, the truly affordable units at the bottom range of the AMI, I'm not talking about the missing middle units, and the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance requires that. And HAC has said at recent meetings, and it's on video, that they will not be prioritized for the units that are for the 50 and under percent under AMI. In addition, I wanted to tell everyone, putting this building in the Perlman's parking lot is the equivalent of me putting a six-story building in my backyard. There's no difference. They're required to, now our six, they're maxed out and they have, with, with all of their, with their building already and they have a parking lot, it would be just no different than me putting a six-story building in my backyard. Thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you. All right, and our last speaker tonight is Kira Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to raise an issue reflected in a letter sent by the Kingsley Law Group to Corporation Counsel, Deputy City Attorney, Alderman and the Mayor this afternoon on behalf of the 1900 Sherman Concerns. I'm going to read from that a little bit, but I ask that you recognize this issue in your discussion tonight. So from his letter, for the following reasons, 1900 Sherman Concerns ask that the City Council continue its consideration of the proposed ordinance regarding the zoning of the property until HACC provides additional information regarding the ownership structure that the LLC will develop and operate the property. As you know, the city of Evanston has a very comprehensive and very strict requirements regarding the disclosure of ownership interests in property for which a zoning change is requested. In this case, they're not only requesting a map amendment, but they're also requesting a special use, which are two major zoning changes. But these requirements, which again are in our code here, are set forth in Chapter 18, specifically Section 1, I won't go into it, but, so these are requirements. And in their disclosure statement, the HACC, associated with its application for zoning relief, they identified themselves and no other entity as applicant for zoning relief and owner of the property. However, at the Plan Commission Meeting, and as the lawyer referenced, they, on October 14th abruptly announced that the Illinois law mandated, required them to partner with a private entity. At the Planning Commission Meeting, officials indicated that they were in negotiations with a private developer and had been for several months, but the officials refused to disclose the name of this potential partner. And one official said it would be inappropriate to identify the private developer partner. A different HACC official said there's no reason not to identify the private developer partner, but then refused to provide the names. Further, although the HACC officials represented that the private development partner would be, have a minority interest, perhaps a 1% interest, the actual terms of the partnership and ownership structure are not, have not been disclosed to the city and to the public. On November 9th, at the Planning and Zoning Committee Meeting, HACC disclosed no additional information. And as to make it clear, Chapter 18 of the City Code, Evanston requires transparency in all applications for zoning relief. By its own admission, HACC's application does not provide all the information required by City Code. Further, HACC apparently knows who the private development partner will be, yet refuses to disclose the information and the full terms of this partnership agreement. So he asked that the consideration of the ordinance be continued until HACC has fully disclosed all information required by Chapter 18, full term of its arrangement with its private developer partner. And since almost every component of this product, of this project has changed from their intention, from a 70% reverse from their definition of affordable housing, from affordable to luxury, and a 45% increase in height from what their intention was, the point is that they should reveal what is, this is now requires a private investor, even if their intention is that it's a minority share. Is this component, who knows, could also transform. Again, it's a requirement of our code, so why don't we insist that they provide this, hold this until they provide it and then go from there. Also, I just want to.
We're, we're, Kira, we're way, we're way over the time.
Okay, the 17 missing middle units are almost $1,700 and there's 185 properties available on the market in Evanston, naturally occurring. We don't need these properties, like a studio for $1,700 is not affordable. So I'm confused why people are out champion, championing for this. Yay for the affordable units, but not for the missing middle. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the, the point that, that you raised about disclosure, we will talk about that this evening when we get to that item on the agenda. And I know we have Rich Manocchio here from the HAC and our staff has talked with him. And so we'll, we'll get that straightened out related to the legal letter that we had and making sure it's disclosed who the, the 1% owner is. So with that, it concludes public comments tonight. I know we had a lot of people speaking on a variety of issues, so thank you everyone for.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could just take a moment, Ms. Kelly made some comments that were absolutely unfounded regarding Jean Lindwall. Again, I would like to ask Director Niden, just to repeat Ms. Lindwall's lack of participation in the Plan Commission discussion about the 1900 Sherman Building because I, I don't want to leave information out in the public that is harmful to someone's reputation. And I believe we owe that to.
What I'd like to do, I mean, there's harmful information, I feel, said all the time at public comment and we don't go back and forth with, with people on that. What I'd like to do, Alderman Fisk, is when we get to this item on the agenda, I imagine it's going to be pulled off the agenda for discussion, let's ask Johanna to talk about that because that is legitimate, but let's do it at that point.
Okay, that's fine.
So we don't sound oppressive in here. Okay, so thank you, thank you, everybody. I think you got a good flavor of the, the difference of opinions that we have here in our community, which makes it a rich one. And I think.
Hello? Hello?
Community is.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I'm sorry, is this Ms. Greer?
Yes, it is, I'm sorry, I never got the information, so I did get it late.
Okay, all right, so Ms. Greer, we set aside a minute and 15 seconds today because we had so many people, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you have a minute and 15 to speak, so.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry about that, yeah, I didn't get the information. But my name is Brenda Greer and I've lived in Evanston 57 years and I am certainly for the development, but only under certain circumstance. I feel there are things that need to be considered regarding this development in regards to the Perlman neighbors next door. I think that due to the fact that they had gone through already being inconvenienced from the development that was done on Emerson and they're just really kind of getting back to their normal livelihood due to that construction, I think that they should greatly, that they should be compensated during this project if it goes forward. Also, regarding the parking, I, I was told I think there are going to be 37 units of parking available with this new development. And then are there going to be parking spaces for the seniors at the Perlman building? I'm told that they're going to have parking for them at the E2 building or some other location. So I think that it needs to be kept in mind that we have a lot of seniors in that building that have health issues and some are not able to even walk that far. So they're being inconvenienced as far as parking, if parking's not going to be available to them. And then at the E2, are these parks going to be available for the new tenants or are these for the seniors at the Perlman building who aren't able, some of them, to walk that far or away from their building? Another thing also, I'd like to see these developers as coming in now building more low-income hub rental rates in other areas besides just the 5th Ward in downtown Evanston. We need housing in Evanston greatly for low income and also we're leaving out those that at a $30,000 to $60,000 salary range yearly. There's a whole nother group of people that aren't being considered is why too also we have a lot of people that are homeless. And I hope to see during my lifetime that we will be building in other areas in Evanston and consider these set-asides to be set at HUD's rental market fares because the rental fares and fees that are being set now, they are not hub rental available prices. Nobody can afford a studio at 13, 14,000 or 15,000. And also in the contracts, I hope during the future, if this is done, that you will allow for the rental rate that's going to be set to change when it change yearly with hub fare marketing rate and not after 15, 10 to 15 years, it go back to fare market rentals for it to continue to stay at the hub rental fee and not a person live in a complex apartment for so many years and then it changes and goes up to regular market rental rates and that person has to move at a later date in their life. Thank you and everyone, enjoy the holidays.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Greer, you too. And thank you, everybody, for speaking at public comment. We're now going to move on to the agenda. We've got several special orders of business tonight, all related to the, to many, all related to the budgets, pretty, pretty much, a few that. And so I'm going to ask if Alderman could turn back on your video so I can see that you're here. And I'm going to ask Alderman Rainey if she wouldn't move SP1. It's the senior Alderman.
Okay, SP1 is ordinance 110020 approving the 2021 fiscal year budget of the city of Evanston. We're being asked to adopt this budget for the city of Evanston in the amount of $297,196,105. This is for action this evening. I move approval.
All right, so this item is now open for conversation. I'm going to ask the city manager if she would like to kick this off. City Manager Storley, are you here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So yes, there's been a lot of discussion. We had a good discussion last week at the special sitting council meeting regarding the budget. We don't have a prepared presentation for tonight. We just wanted to leave as much time as possible for open discussion. But we have prepared some slides and some numbers in the event that we're going to pick some of the suggestions out of the proposed budget. So at this point, I open it up to discussion.
All right, all right, so we will open this up to discussion. I know there's lots of questions and concerns people still have about the, about the budget. Does anybody want to start off? We'll start with Alderman Fleming.
Yeah, I know you don't have a presentation, Erica, but can you or if there's been any changes since our last conversation, just for the public who maybe didn't read the packet and are looking for information?
We do have two slides that we can put up that incorporate the changes that were made or consensus agreed to at last week's meeting regarding the transfer of funding from the police department to the Human Services Fund and then the $50,000 reduction for the proposed senior services addition. So that brought the tax levy down to 4.5% total. So if you'd like, I can put that up.
I think that would be helpful for the public and then I have a couple of questions.
Great, I'm going to ask Kate Lewis-Laken, our budget coordinator, to share her screen. So this is just a summary of what was included based on the discussion last week, holding one additional police officer vacant for next year and then holding one records input operator position vacant for next year. And then the next slide, please to keep going. Yes, which brings us to this chart, which shows where we are currently on the proposed increase to the property tax levy. So we still have $250,000 in the Human Services Fund for the levy increase, that's down from $500,000. We still have the Debt Service Fund increase and then the two pension increases. So that's 4.1% and then combining that with the library and general assistance, we're at 4.5%.
Okay, thank you. So I, I fortunately have the same concerns that I had before and I've spoken to you about several times. You know, I know it's a bad year for everybody financially, but I just don't agree with the tax levy. I understand the presentation made by the actuary last month and I understand the need for increasing our pension payments, but as I said, right now it's, although it's a slight increase. But as I said, right now, it's, although it's a slight increase of, I think, $600,000, it is not necessary. And as I said before, all of our retired police and firemen are currently getting their pension. So while I am concerned about the ones in the future, I'm also concerned about the taxpayers who don't have jobs, who don't have pensions, or a variety of other things. I do wish that we would have moved the $125,000 from police training that's optional over to the either human services, you know, direct line items, or to the alternatives to arrest, excuse me, alternatives to non-response. We're working on the committee. We're very excited about coming forward with something, but we also want it to be successful. And we, we just have no idea how much that's going to cost. So it would be nice to have some extra money in there so we can make sure we have a program that hopefully meets the mark, at least as we get started. And then my other concern just, you know, has to do with the debt payment. I really, I know they didn't pass, but I, you know, we talk a lot about Northwestern paying their share. They don't pay property taxes. We have this, the neighbor fund that, as I understand, is not quite allocated. And the only thing that I understand, we do have in the works for our racial equity work is a consultant to come in and do some work. So I really wish we would have moved that $1 million, or at least asked Northwestern for that to offset that debt payment, because that would be their contribution to, you know, the property taxes they don't pay. And I know, while that's for racial equity work, we talk a lot about our African American residents being pushed out of town for housing costs and property tax costs, and that would have been a direct, you know, offset of that cost for them. So, you know, I'm just unfortunate that we couldn't get there as a council to bring this property tax levy down to as small as possible, even nothing, just understanding that residents are feeling really insecure now financially. And even though it's a small enough cost, it is wrapped in with all the other property tax increases residents are looking at. And I just, I'm just concerned that that does not send them the best message that we really are empathetic and understanding to their financial plight right now.
Thank you, Alderman. Alder, one, Alderman Rainey.
You're on mute, Alderman Rainey.
Okay, is Johanna, is Johanna Niden on here? I can't see her. I have a question.
She should be somewhere.
Alderman Rainey, I'm here.
Okay. We talk a lot about cutting things. I want to know, get calls frequently about permits. What do our, what does our permit revenue look like? What, I just searched the budget, I can't even find it. Permit revenue for community development. What are you projecting?
For this year?
Yeah, for the 2021 budget.
Well, the permit revenue for this year has been quite strong. We're attributing it to people being at home. They're maybe not taking vacations. They're doing those home improvement projects. So we will be over our projected revenue for 2020, which was, I believe I thought off the top of my head, it was four and a half, about four and a half million is what we projected for this year.
Okay, what are you talking about? The, going forward, the 2021 budget?
In 2021, we're projecting similar revenue levels to what we would have assumed this year would have been, not knowing what people's billing activities might be, or other financial constraints on people's lives. So we, we've kept it flat at the same amount.
Same, can I just get clarity on that? Is it the same amount that we budgeted for 2020? Or did we reduce that down, thinking there would be an adverse impact because of the pandemic?
We've tried to keep it the same every year, just because we assume there's going to be maybe one or two big projects. We assume that there will be some building activity, and we assume Northwestern will do some, some small activities, just because they're maintaining their, their building stock.
So are we accounting for that in, in this year's budget, right? That's already figured in, right?
Right. We, we have been budgeting for the past few years, our building permit revenue differently than we had four or five years ago, which was very fine tuning, saying, oh, this big project is going to hit this year. We had way too many projects that never hit in the year that we project, we projected them to hit, so we stopped doing that.
Right. All right. What about, have you heard any more about Evanston Place Building? The rumored sale of Evanston Place?
I have not.
$70 million?
I have not heard anything further about the sale.
Now, what about the city manager? City manager, have you, have you really researched all of our revenue sources? I know our revenue sources are all down, but just think, we have permits that are not all down. And so I'm wondering, have we, have we given thought to some of those revenue sources that might be up, and given some consideration to those?
Yes, we pay careful attention to those that we think will be up, because they are going to be offsetting those that will be down. Going into next year, we expect that building permits applications will still be strong. People will continue to do projects from home while they are not traveling and doing other things. So we're, we're expecting that volume to stay steady, which will be great, because we have so many other revenues that are completely devastated. We try to be realistic but conservative with estimating next year's revenues, because even though we have good news about a vaccine, the implementation of that vaccine, and the sort of attitude of the American public of when they're going to be willing to take a vaccine, will determine how quickly we get to a recovery phase of this pandemic. So we're very concerned that there could be issues that pop up with supply chain, or with willingness, or with, with any of the things. So we don't expect that we're going to be on the strong road to recovery, potentially until the fourth quarter of 2021. So if all goes well, and everything goes right, things could be looking good in the fourth quarter of next year. If everything doesn't go perfectly, which has the potential to happen, next year could just be buying time, and everybody keeping to what we're doing this year, and hoping that the recovery starts happening in 2022.
All right. A source of revenue that was discussed at the last, at our last meeting was from Chief Scott's memo, and it had to do with charges that the City of Evanston taxpayers are paying in the amount of $658,986 for fire service and rescue calls to Northwestern University. I didn't get much reaction from any members of the council, and we're sitting on this over half a million dollars worth of money that we really ought to be collecting from Northwestern. But I can tell you that the reaction from the community to my recommendation, which, you know, is nothing new. We've been talking about attempting to collect service fees from Northwestern for years. And believe me, I've taken no credit for this, other than this popped up in a memo, and I raised it. And I, I just want to make sure our staff is taking this seriously, the collection of this money on a regular basis, not just because we're desperate this year, but it needs to be an ongoing, regular payment from Northwestern, not something out of the Good Neighbor Policy, but a fee for service as we charge them for police services for game day and, and other activities that we charge for police services. Fire services are critical to Northwestern. They don't have an alternative fire department like they have up until now, at least, an alternative police department. So I'd like to know what the plan is to collect, or at least invoice Northwestern for fire and rescue services. That's a serious question that I'm looking for an answer to.
That is a, a great question. We had a little bit of dialogue about this with Northwestern over the past week, since this came up last week at the budget meeting. And, you know, Northwestern views the Good Neighbor Fund in the past as supporting those fire services. And the allocations that were mutually agreed upon by the university president and the mayor for the past five years allocated the largest portion of the allocations in the Good Neighbor Fund towards supporting fire services. I believe last year's number was approximately $385,000. So historically, that has been.
That doesn't quite cover it, when the bill is 658,986.
That is correct. So, you know, there, in the past, there has also been, you know, the purchase of the ambulances and things like that. So they've, they've chosen to support fire service in different ways. But I understand where you're going with this, and whether or not the university would be willing to agree to pay outright for these services. Like, that's a discussion that we can continue to have with them, but that's not an agreement that I was able to obtain in, in the weeks, weeks' time, since it was brought up. But we will continue to discuss it with them over the course of the next, next year, and see what we can come up with in order to.
Well, I, I would hope the community is appalled by the fact that we would even say something like, if we could get Northwestern to agree to pay for the fire service, because they're not agreeing to pay for the fire service means that our community has an additional $658,986 attached to their, to their real estate tax bill for this bill. So I will fight to get this bill pared down to, to at least below $658,000. But after that, I can't do anymore, because that is Northwestern's burden. And we can't do anything about that, ladies and gentlemen of the City of Evanston, because they are refusing to pay their fair share. We're not asking them to pay taxes, because the Supreme Court has told us they don't have to pay. But nobody told them that they don't have to pay for fire service. So there. Everybody wants to defund the police department? Well, somebody needs to start funding the fire department, and that is Northwestern University for fire services received. And this council can sit mum on, on that issue, but it is insulting that they will not pay for that service.
Erica, I think, I don't think it should take a year, but I think that you should. I, I don't think it's, I, just personally, as a principle, like, to bill something for, to somebody that you never told them they were going to be billed for, doesn't sit well with me personally. I don't like to get.
I asked to negotiate. I asked to.
But I'm just saying, going forward, Alderman Rainey, I think this is a very legitimate conversation to be having with Northwestern. I'd want to know, and have the staff do some research about other communities, because we're not the only one with a big university there. And this is a very large expense, certainly with fire services and stuff. Now, I did think that of that 656,000, or whatever that exact number was, I thought half, I thought, we talked about it last week, I thought half had been covered actually by insurance and all of that. And is the other half, or is this whole 656, the unfunded part?
That's the unfunded part.
Okay.
The other part was ambulance, yes.
All right. Let's see, Alderman Fleming, and then Braithwaite.
Oh, and I'll go really quick, because I know Peter hadn't spoken yet, but Alderman Rainey, I totally support that. And I was thinking that the staff was going to work on it and come back this week with more information, so I wasn't trying to be mum. And Alderman, I mean, excuse me, Mayor Haggerty, to your point in terms of researching other communities, I think we can all probably Google and see other communities that are doing quite a bit more for their municipalities than Northwestern are, whether it's for fire service, or sewer service, or whatever else. So I don't know, in my opinion, we don't need to go, you know, do too much research in terms of proving to Northwestern, other communities, other universities are contributing more to the cities in which they reside. So I think we should just go straight to negotiation, or bargaining, or whatever we're doing, versus trying to show them that other, you know, other universities are, are doing more to help the citizen base in the community they're in.
Thank, thank you. Alderman Braithwaite, then Rue Simmons. You're muted, Peter.
Can you hear me now?
Again.
Perfect. So Alderman Rainey, you, you're going down a path with community development. Johanna, can you just come back? And maybe I missed it in your presentation. I can't find it in the budget. How much over budget are you with permit fees this year?
I think we were going to be a little north of 5 million.
Well, you said it was four, so four was, 4. something was budgeted. What's the, what's the over?
Alderman.
Between what was budgeted and where we are right now, year to date.
Okay.
Hattash can probably give the year to date.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. So we have budgeted the same amount, 4.2 million for '20, and 4.2 million for '20, '21 for permits. We are over $1 million this year. So far, we have received around 5.3 million in permits in 2020.
So we're $1 million over budget with, with permitting fees. And then, Hattash, do you have the ability to look back in 2019?
2019.
Or a year, go back a previous year, from whatever?
I mean, 2019, we received 4.6 million.
And what was budgeted?
Budgeted amount, that's, let's me look up that number.
It was also 4.2 million. We've had the budget flat since 2019.
No, but she also, well, maybe someplace I heard that if we budgeted the same amount for the past few years, there was a, we're over $1 million over that, then I'm curious to know what the previous year was.
If I remember, if I remember right, we were, we were, we were under, we had been overestimating building.
I get it. Right. So, Hattash, as you're looking, and members, council, and the public, I, I can appreciate our, our permitting fees. And Johanna, I know we've had a, kind of an informal conversation. My curiosity is, and this may be always anecdotal, we don't have any clear statistics to back up what I'm going to say, but from my sense in the phone calls that I receive, not through anyone's fault, and I know that we are building in efficiencies moving forward, that there's always this backlog, meaning that we have worked its bottleneck, for whatever reason, right around this time. And my curiosity tells me that we're going to continue to be at home for some time, and we should continue to see a large number of people working on their homes. So if, if there isn't enough information to hedge, then I'm fine, but I just think it's something we need to be mindful of, as an opportunity to capture some additional revenue.
Alderman Braithwaite, the backlog is generally due to the seasonality. People, people want to build and do projects in the summertime. And we've, we've been running three, you know, three weeks from, depending on what zoning reviews, other things, sometimes three to four weeks. Some of the, as we've discussed, some of the backlog is a perception, because often we, we don't have enough information from an applicant. We've put it out to an applicant to get more information. They, you know, there's the city's holding me up perception. So this year, we also, we just, the volume of permits, we just had a lot of. They were smaller, maybe smaller dollar amounts, but we had just a larger volume during the summer months. I'm, I've been feeling pretty good about the, keeping the, the revenue number where it is, because we had anticipated in previous years, large permit activity from Northwestern, planned development activity. And sometimes those are the big projects that don't happen. They've also been the projects that have come in, that then we can count on that revenue. But the 4.2 number was a number that we came up with, that fits the small, the small permit activity, some Northwestern, and maybe one or two planned developments, without overestimating. Because if you recall, I think it was three years ago, we were several million dollars short, because we had over anticipated what we would get. And the, and the 4.2 is what we've been at, kind of at a steady number for many years.
Got it. Thank you for your response.
All right, Alderman Rue Simmons, and then Alderman Wynn.
Thank you. So it sounds like I have my answer to this, but just going to follow up from our last meeting. City Manager Storley, you have not been able to reach any negotiating point with Northwestern as it relates to Alderman Rainey's request of supporting their fire service. And I imagine Mayor Haggerty, the same goes for my request, that they contribute $2 million. Is there any response to that, any official response from Northwestern?
Yeah, the official response to me, to me, and I, is that we're willing to talk about the Good Neighbor Fund, you know, for, right now, the Good Neighbor Fund that we have is $1 million this year, and then they did the other half a million dollars, which is more of a, a community process. That that's for 2021. And in 2021, they are willing. That that's for twenty twenty one. And in twenty twenty one, uh, they are willing to sit down and have a conversation about that request of can we do more to the Good Neighbor Fund, just in terms of of overall dollars uh as well as fire?
So this really wa- this was really not about the Good Neighbor Fund. It was about a response, a financial um response to um the the crisis that we have and that we're all in this together. Other nonprofits, individual donors, major donors, households, everyone um in this community seems to be working towards solutions to deal with the financial impact in our city, but Northwestern. And I don't see that they even have enough respect for us to show up and have a comment or an official statement um in response to the concerns that we have. So I think I don't, I just want to say that I don't think it's unreasonable. Seems the only way to have a conversation with Northwestern is through um my public comment and their, you know, observation of our meetings. And it it's not a unreasonable request. Northwestern should be the partner that they say that they are. They could raise two million dollars in one email based on the network that they have and the access to resources that they have. So I would like to see Northwestern participate in what the business of the city. And we have other nonprofit presidents and CEOs are coming and having comment and working with us, and I just have not seen the same support. And so I hear that it's not planned, it's not enough time. We need more time to think about it, but we had an unforeseen pandemic. So this isn't that we were not prepared for our fiscal responsibilities, it's that we have a emergency in our city that's translated into a financial budget hole. Um, and so I just want to say that I'm very disappointed that Northwestern has not made more of a commitment. And I do hope that we um, I understand, Mayor Hagerty, to your point, that we can't now invoice someone for something that had not been previously negotiated. But it should not take, you know, another fiscal year for us to talk about that being an invoice, as Alderman Rainey said, and not not another memo. So um, that's that's all that I have on that.
All right, other other questions, comments on the budget? Alderman Wen?
Well, I I wanted to comment on a number of points of this discussion. Um, Alderman Rainey, I took what you said quite seriously uh at the last meeting. Um, I think that certainly, uh, but I do agree with Mayor Hagerty that we can't surprise them with an invoice. Uh, I think that we do need to put them on some kind of notice that um that we can't provide uh free po- fire services uh for them going forward, that they need to start paying for this. Um, and I do agree with Alderman Rue Simmons that um everyone is pitching in during this crisis, and we need them to pitch in as well. Uh, and with respect to the comments that Alderman Fleming made, um, I'd like to explore those a little bit, Alderman Fleming, in terms of the uh Good Neighbor Fund that that, and I'm not sure quite I that I quite understood what your point was, but that the million dollars from the Good Neighbor Fund, to what extent, I know that they've, Northwestern has earmarked that for racial equity equity issues. But um, I don't know that we have a program yet for for that to roll into. So uh, when we think about, uh, when I think about the equity issues, the folks who are most impacted by uh uh property tax increase increase are people who um generally are at the lower end of our socioeconomic spectrum. Uh, and so, I mean, I would like to think some more about, is this the the time that we actually consider using that money in a way that will benefit um Evanstonians across that swath? And, you know, I don't, I mean, I I I am very committed to racial equity, and I serve on the Equity and Empowerment Board, but I am also keenly aware of what a property tax increase will do to our community. So um, I I think that's what Alderman Fleming might have been, you might have been um uh opening up, um, Alderman Fleming, I'd like to hear more about that. But and then my last point is, with respect to the increase in the permit revenue, um, not all of us may have experienced us it, but those of us who did experience the hailstorm that happened to Evanston in April, um, know that uh virtually every single uh house i- i- in any direction from my house, including my own house, has had a new roof put on it. Some houses have had entirely new siding put on them. Um, I can count uh probably two hundred new roofs uh near my house, and my house is on that list to get done. Um, and so I don't want us to um possibly be led into thinking that that permit increase is entirely folks doing, being at home and doing work, because that hailstorm did millions of dollars of damage um across a swath of Evanston. Um, so but the so those are my points. Uh, but I certainly do agree that we need to push harder on Northwestern on the fire. Uh, and and um harder to help us in all of the ways that we have been asking them for for so long. Um, and now is, I mean, if if not now, when? Thank you, Mayor.
Just on the on that point, I did talk to Northwestern about um you know, flexibility of the Good Neighbor Funds for twenty twenty one, which are, you know, earmarked specifically for racial equity, and Northwestern wants that commitment fulfilled, that it's focused on racial equity.
So Mayor, did they define that? What's their definition?
They did define that. And and Erica, Erica can talk more to this, or Kimberly, if she's on on the the meeting right now. Um, but yes. And there was a whole press release that they put out on.
I remember, but I'd like to, I I don't remember what their definition was for it. So I do remember there was a press release, yeah.
Mayor, sorry, my camera is not watching. Um, good evening, this is Kimberly Richardson. Um, it's interim Assistant City Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Um, and good evening, City Council members. Um, there was no defined definition. It was one that um racial equity, as we discussed it, um, really is around understanding the basis for equity in race being um the indicator for a lot of inequities. And so, no, there was no definitive um death book textbook definition. However, there was qualifiers of how the funding should be spent. Um, being that it was going to be in the community, majority of funding needed to support community um programming or some type of community support um around um programs that support racial equity. That has not, um, of course, um, we have not defined a lot of those programs, but I'm working with the mayor and city manager um to work with Northwestern to to get them to uh approve the programming that we are considering uh that would have impact on all different um community members, not just those who are of color, but those based off of age, based off of language access um and so forth. And so I just want to be clear, when we talk about racial equity, it isn't just looking at one particular demographic group who is to be funded to utilize that funds to support um our community that are typically marginalized when looking at services.
Thank you.
Race is specific. I mean, it's more specific than being marginalized, though, so I'm just just thinking.
I mean, it's race, it's not gender.
Right, it's not. And we have all kinds of marginalized communities that we care about, but race is specific. So I'm not, if you could clarify that, or if I either heard it wrong.
Sure. I mean, this is a conversation that gladly we'll have uh with the City Council. When we say racial equity, as you know, stated before, yes, race is definitely called. But do realize that people of color also are people who are uh of other um ableism, um, ageism. All of those have indicators that impact people of color. Um, more importantly, we want to make sure programming that um that we are looking at ensures that those are are people who are going to be receiving the benefit. Um, because as you may know, sometimes in those other areas, it depending on your access to services, you may not be able to benefit for some of the things that we have offered. So it is race, but it's not race explicit. It's only saying that race is the is the factor for which we begin with, but it's not the only thing that we look at. So speaking of race, you talk about individuals who um are not English speakers. Well, that impacts multiple um communities, just like the Latinx community. We have a Khmerian community here as well that has also been impacted. So we try to look at it from the standpoint that we're not just focused on race, but race definitely is the basis for how we look at racial equity.
That that doesn't make a difference to me, yeah.
But are we going to have another discussion about this? I realize it's not necessarily a budget topic, since we decided not to use it for the budget. But are we going to have, like, in January, a discussion about what the decisions are?
I would love to come back to City Council and give a a more detailed uh presentation. Um, as you realize, we have not had that discussion in a while.
Yep, thank you, thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, thank you. And I I think it's good to um to schedule that for January. Um, Kimberly, can you uh just um email everyone the article that uh went out on July twenty ninth? Uh, that described the um uh the program and the fund. It was uh half for the Evan- half for Evanston, half for Chicago. But I think it would be helpful uh for us to review that. And also, I think it would be really.
Sure what you're referring to?
Um, it's uh the Northwestern Partners with Evanston on Good Neighbor Racial Equity Fund, and that's on June uh June twenty ninth, uh July twenty ninth, twenty twenty. Uh, so it's on the it's on the Northwestern website. Um, and I do think we need Northwestern um at the table with us in January to talk about this. Because I I think we may be misunderstanding some things at uh was the intention of the program. So I think again, to have a full discussion, we need them there. So if we could do that, I would appreciate it.
All right, what else? So we're on our budget. We're on our twenty twenty one budget. Alderman Rainey?
Um, I think we should talk a little more about not raising taxes. So I I would like to tread very softly um into the um into the reserve fund. Um, we have a reserve fund. Oh, first, could I have clarification on what is our line of credit with? Is it byline? What is our line of credit?
Yes, uh, Alderman Rainey, uh, this is Hattash, this is, good evening. Uh, we have a line of credit of fifteen million with byline bank.
It's fifteen million, okay. That should do it.
And Hattash, we haven't, we haven't had to tap in to that line of credit, correct?
No.
Right. So we have a fifteen million dollar line of credit that we are, and our fabulous uh finance people, Hattash and Kate, are just very careful about us not touching it, and and we're very careful about it, too. We've done a wonderful job with COVID, um, just being very careful. We've gotten all sorts of grants. And we have, we have um a a reserve and we have a policy. And, you know, we, it's it's not necessarily our rainy day fund, but it is a fund that in case we are desperate, we will tap into it. We are desperate right now. We are desperate. Uh, but we are nowhere near as desperate as some of our residents are. And, you know, until this point, I think some of us had no idea how terrible it was for some people. Um, talking to the merchants um in my ward, um, and, you know, it, I I hope I I can get through this, but having some of them break down sobbing, it's 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 more than, it's more than I've ever seen as an Alderman. I just, you know, it's unbearable. Um, and they pay huge taxes, huge property taxes. And our, you know, we talked about, oh, if you have a hundred thousand dollar house, you know, we're going to charge you this much more. Well, these are people paying a lot more than that for a hundred thousand dollar. They have businesses. So um, we have this this uh reserve, and uh we're we're adding five hundred thousand to the uh to the tax bill. I'm saying we take that five hundred thousand dollars off the tax bill, that we take another five hundred thousand, that we take a million dollars out of our reserve fund. Because this is an emergency that we have facing us. I I know that I I think our our tax increase is like two million, is it? Two million four hundred seventy one thousand nine hundred twenty two dollars. All right. Let's take that million dollars and 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 subtract that from the two million plus. Um, we have, we have the line of credit that we've not touched. I don't think we're going to touch it because I don't think we're going to have a tragedy here. Um, we can, we will commit, we will absolutely commit to fixing this um in the next year, next year. This is not going to, this never happened before. It's not going to happen again, I don't believe. Um, I think we should also, and I and I'm going to make a motion that we do that when it comes to that time. I think we also ought to have a a nice discussion about holding steady on what we allocated to the pension funds, the police and fire pension funds for two thousand and twenty, and make an absolute ironclad commitment that we will make them whole in the next year. And once we get a commitment from Northwestern to pay for fire service, make an ironclad commitment that those funds, those payments, the revenue from their paying for fire service will go to the police and fire pension fund over what we normally will pay. I I would make that commitment, and I hope you would, too, because that will be new money that we will ne- we have never gotten before. And that will make us, that will make us make an extra payment to the police and fire pension funds. And that that would bring us, that that would actually make, that would solve our 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 ta- our uh property tax increase almost by a short two hundred thousand dollars. The ti- we've we've just got a Fisher cut bait here. I mean, we've got to do this. We can't, we can talk about every piddly little fifty thousand dollar here, fifty thousand dollar there. Um, I know Alderman Braithwaite said he had some um capital projects he wanted to talk about. I, let's talk about them. Let's get this stuff on the table and 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 get moving here. I I I am, I'm with Alderman uh Simmons. I I think we should not, absolutely should not raise one penny taxes to our to our residents. It's just, it's just too painful for them. And I think some of us, I think some members of the council don't know how bad it is out there.
Does that, that, I want to recap your solution and I guess have Hattash or Erica or somebody confirm this. So what I heard Alderman Rainey say is remove the five hundred thousand that we've budgeted for cash reserve, you know, cash reserves in um to put into cash reserves in twenty twenty one. Remove that five hundred thousand, then remove.
Another.
I get it. I'm following me. Then remove another five hundred thousand, take five hundred thousand from the current cash reserves, okay? And then only pay the minimum on the pension uh requirements in the in the fire and police pensions. That's still, and tho- tho- those were the, those were the three recommendations, but that doesn't close the whole.
No, not quite. No, it does not.
Okay, okay. But um, so maybe maybe finance could run, you know, run that on their budget balancing worksheet so the Alderman could see what that looks like. If the council wanted to move in that direction, uh, I would just strongly advise that we also have a um amendment to this that um this is a one-time uh, you know, approach that's being taken by the city council, and there's a commitment on the city council's part next year to pay sort of in full in terms of what our commitment has been on pensions and to restore the um, you know, maybe at a more accelerated pace, the um cash reserves to try and get up to that two months of cash reserve.
We would, I would absolutely insist on that because that was.
because that would be, that would be very important for the rating agencies.
Absolutely.
I don't think they would, they would not diss us this year for this, but we would have to make that kind of statement. And we've never done this before, but you know what? No community in this country has ever been in this mess before. And we have this cash reserve. I mean, God bless that we have it. And that's what it's for. And we have a line of credit we've never touched. And so, you know, we're not in any trouble. And, you know, we can pontificate about how we can't touch this cash reserve, but that's what it's there for. And that's what it's there for this one year. I mean, we cannot deplete it much more, but that's what it's there for. We need to use it. And we need to help these people get through this year without raising their taxes.
All right. I think we just have to realize, too, last year on the cash reserve, we only, I say last year, it's really 2020. We only cut into that cash reserve with $2 million. So, that cash reserve, I recall, was around 14 million. It's down to about 12 right now. We took $2 million of that, but Erica Storey and staff found another $10 million of savings. Had they not been able to do that, and, you know, we would have used up the entire cash reserve or we'd only have about $2 million of the cash reserve. I mention that only because, you know, cash reserves are there because you don't know what's gonna happen. There could be a pandemic like we just had. Luckily, we had room elsewhere to get that $10 million savings. I don't know, and I certainly don't want to see, though, the City Manager's Office handicapped to such an extent that if bad things happen in 2021, they don't have enough room to finesse. And maybe they still do. I mean, we're taking half a million dollars more. We're in essence saying, some of that $2 million this year, we're really taking $2.5 million. You know, although half a million is going to the fall year. So, lots of hands up. Let's go with Alderman Revelle, then Alderman Wilson, and then Win, and then Ru Simmons, and then Braithwaite.
Well, I have just a brief comment because it makes me very nervous to think about the bond rating companies looking askance at what we're doing. So, I get, my question is, how do we, how do we commit ourselves in such a way? What instrument do we use to make it so binding that we actually follow through a year from now? Because I think we've talked a lot about, you know, pledging to do more next year and then the next year, and then we kind of back off from it. So, I guess, how can we, what instrument would we use to make it clear to the bond rating companies that they could count on our following through?
I assume it's a resolution that would come before the council on December 15th or whenever that next council meeting is. Erica, do you have any other thoughts on that?
That's, that would be my suggestion. It's, we've been in this position of not having a proper reserve balance for many years. I think it's been even before 2015 was the last time we actually had the two months of reserve in place. And we've been trying to claw our way back up to getting those two months back in place. You know, we ended, using the $2 million of the reserve for current year, we're down to about 12.5% of that 16.6% that we're aiming to have. And, you know, we were in the middle of a three-year plan to shore up those reserves when, you know, the pandemic hit and we weren't able to fulfill on that commitment. So, I think if the council decides to go in this direction in order to signal to the bond rating agencies that this isn't just something that we wouldn't follow through on, that we actually really wanted to make sure that we tried to get back up to that 16.6 within a reasonable timeframe, and then a resolution would be appropriate. Certainly, if it had support from the entire council, it would hold more water than if it barely passed. But also, I think the rating agencies would recognize that, you know, we also have an election coming up and that anything could happen. So, I would be hesitant to suggest that as your city manager. Free to go whichever direction that they so choose.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Alderman Revelle? Okay, so let's go to Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Win.
Thanks. While I wish there was a reality for there being ironclad commitments, there just isn't one. So, I do understand and appreciate that things are extremely hard for a lot of people. But my concern is that things are potentially gonna get worse. And there are significant indications that we are staring down some even deeper challenges, you know, going into the next year. So, I think if that happens, our community is gonna be relying on the city to provide even more services than what we're doing. So, I think in line with that, that it's incumbent on us to stay as financially stable and secure as we can right now. You know, those, you know, those funds that are in the reserves, you know, we're in a bad situation, but if it gets worse, we could be in a crisis situation. The eviction moratorium is gonna expire in December. I think we're looking at a really difficult winter where housing and food insecurity is gonna be very, very critical. And, you know, not keeping that money in the reserves for that kind of a scenario, I think would probably be a mistake. I had a budget meeting a little while back and somebody had made a comment about, well, what if things go well? I'd be much more comfortable making, you know, again, as unenforceable as any other commitment. But my personal commitment would be that if things do go very well next year, we get, you know, virus goes away, restaurants are open, things are, you know, money's coming in. I would love to do a tax cut next year. You know, if we get the money that we're not expecting and we exceed the budget. It's not funny, Alderman Rainey. I mean, you know, we're asking people to, you know, really, you know, power through a lot of stuff. But we have to be positioned to provide these resources because I think people are gonna need them. And if we don't have the resources available, we're not gonna be able to provide our community what they need. So, that's one of the things that worries me.
Thank you. Alder, Alder, let's see. Win, Alderman Win.
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Win? Can I just ask Hattash one moment? I apologize for interrupting. Hattash, when it's my turn, can you please find out, pull up our capital expenses? My apologies, Alderman Win. Thank you very much.
That's fine. That's fine. That's right. I, you know, Alderman Rainey, I applaud your creativity so much and the scouring that you're doing of the budget. I, you know, there might be a very different group of Aldermen as of next April or May who decide that resolution doesn't mean anything to them. So, I'm very concerned about that. I'm also concerned because this, you know, we're really, I think we finally made it to the third inning of this, of COVID. And I've been telling people we're still in the bottom of the second. I think maybe we're in the bottom of the third now. But that vaccine, most of us here are not gonna get that vaccine until maybe next fall. I mean, unless someone is an essential worker and I don't know it, or a healthcare provider. So, I think this, we're gonna have these closures, we're gonna have these problems to our economy. I don't think that we can expect it to come back that quickly so that we would be in a position to actually, you know, what would we have to do? What kind of taxes would we have to raise next year in order to fulfill this commitment? That would be my big concern. And then I agree with Alderman Wilson. I mean, we are, at CDBG, we've talked about the fact that we are looking at this tidal wave that's on the horizon and it's coming at us really fast with this eviction moratorium being lifted and the level of food insecurity that we are experiencing throughout Evanston. I mean, those are all concerns for people who might have to pay a higher property tax, but there are also concerns that we will have nothing to help them. And so, it's a question of what are those reserves there for? So, I think, of course, we can all talk about all of this and I wish we had more. And I, so I'm just saying, these are all the things that are passing through my head. I am very worried that COVID is not going away anytime soon. And I think Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays are just gonna be pounding us with COVID in January and February.
Thank you, Alderman Win. Alderman Braithwaite? And then Alderman Braithwaite, then Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just want to pause for a moment and I hope the public and those who decided to stick with this discussion beyond public comments hear the time and energy that we're, you know, putting into trying not to raise taxes. And I'm willing, I know it's gonna be a late night, but Hattash, I asked you to pull up our capital budget for 2020. And just doing simple math, if the nine of us find anywhere between $60,000 and $70,000 worth of projects in our ward that we're willing to take a position on to try to save some money, that's one pathway. And I'll come up with others, but I'll tell you, I will be very frustrated if there are people who came tonight with a position of just voting no without us continuing to roll up our sleeves and look for other options. So, I definitely don't want to raise anyone's taxes, definitely not the residents. And I'm even just as concerned about our businesses that pay a much higher rate as Alderman Rainey had outlined earlier. So, Hattash, this evening at Administrative Public Works, we looked at, I think, 20 vehicles that need to be replaced. And I think whoever prepared the staff memo defined it as an in-house cost. Alderman Rainey, did you come prepare? I know we had a couple of conversations to identify vehicles that we can keep on the road maybe for an additional year and not spend. And then I'm willing to go before my residents and explain that I think there is $38,000 for a consulting fee in Mason Park that I would also, if I could give that back just to reduce the tax levy. And I think that's where we need to look. Look into your wards and figure out where we can hold, just given the uncertainty. But again, I'm talking to the folks who would position themselves to say no. Like, roll up your sleeves and decide what can you, what project in your ward that can wait a year? And then hopefully, we can move forward.
My question on the capital, Alderman Braithwaite, and I guess this is for Erica and Hattash, is how much savings do we really get out of that, right? Because it's capital and we're borrowing every year for capital. We normally spend 10 and we consider it to six or seven. You know, taking that $1 million project away, I believe is really only saving us sort of the interest on that project in the principal, long in the future, not necessarily-
Mayor, your audio is jumping up and down and really staticky. That's better.
I'm sorry.
No, it's still bad. Still bad.
Let's go to the first, Alderman, Alderman, I think I had said Rainey and then Alderman Fleming.
One of the things that I, I mean, we can't be cutting, you know, $20,000 and $30,000 here and there and get to no tax increase, so just saying that. But one of the things we've got to do, we've got to be more creative. Our staff cannot continue to say no to our businesses that come to them and ask them for things. For example, we heard Amy Morton tonight. I mean, I don't know what her deal is, but it sounds like she's being very needy and needs to have something, we need to discuss something with her about what she needs. I know in my ward, there's people who wanna do things that are a little different. And, I mean, you go to Chicago and they've got streets closed so that people can put up tents and continue to serve food and do things. And we're not being, I don't believe, I know, I love our staff and I know how hard they're working, but I think we've gotta loosen up a little. And so that, you know, so that we can start making, doing better with liquor tax and food tax and things like that. I mean, I remember before when our mayor took it upon himself, which was fabulous to say, yeah, you can sell cocktails at the curb. And then the governor slammed him down and said, the state liquor commission said, no, you can't. And I became part of a group that fought. And then finally, three months later, after most of the bars had gone under, the liquor commissioner in the state said, oh, yeah, you can. You know, I mean, that was way too late. Our mayor was way ahead of his time. But we've got to think more openly about some of these issues. You know, like, I know I've had talks with Director Niden about, you know, well, we can't have parking, we can't have dining in the parking lane because we gotta do snow removal. Well, maybe we've gotta tell, you know, and that's probably part of Amy Morton's. You can't, you gotta clear the snow off the streets. Well, maybe it's gonna be Amy Morton's job to clean the snow off her sidewalk. You know, I don't know. I've never been in a pandemic before and I've never been in the planning department, so I don't know what all the details are. But I just think we have to be a little lighter when we come down with the sledgehammer saying, no, you can't do this. We've never done it before. Maybe, maybe our restaurateurs and bar owners are smarter than we are in some cases. Just saying, maybe we should just do what Amy said and sit down and all of us talk about these things so that we can generate some income for these people and they can stay in business. And we're all gonna be better off for it. That's all. But we can't, we can't reduce the, we can't eliminate the tax increase with $5,000, $10,000, $20,000. We gotta go big.
I agree. Thank you. Alderman Fleming, Alderman, I'm losing track because I know everybody has things they want to say here. I'm gonna go Alderman Fleming, then Alderman Ru Simmons, and then Braithwaite.
I think Ru Simmons was before me.
Okay, Alderman Ru Simmons.
No, Alderman Fleming, you were definitely before me. All right. Well, I'm not, I don't have any, I mean, I wish I was a budgeting expert. I gave the ideas that I have. I do agree, Alderman Rainey, that, you know, we are gonna have to be more creative. You know, Alderman Saffron brought forward the slot machine. It's not slot machine, but, you know, gaming. Not really my, not really my thing, but I know people have, you know, voiced some interest in it. It's not, you know, I think I remember people talking about we were a dry town and that was gonna kill us. And I, Alderman Braithwaite, I appreciate your comments. I only have one project in my ward and I think if I'm correct, I already told Laura Biggs to hold off on it because it's the Oakton project and we don't have enough cars to really count to make it efficient. So, I'm happy to give up those things as well. I think the other issue for me, and I've spoken to City Manager Storey about this a lot, is, you know, we don't have the revenue because of the pandemic and other things, but are we really tightening up our spending? You know, I've looked at the budget. I have a spreadsheet of things of which I, you know, I'm not sure that we can not do them all, but I mean, there's some things in which, you know, are we tightening up our spending? You know, there's a line item in the parks budget for $300,000 for food. I assume it's for, you know, camps, but are camps gonna be thriving next year in which we need $300,000 for food? I mean, I think, and as much as I'm willing to go line by line and I have, I also don't know that that is the job of the council totally, right? I think that our direction, or my direction, at least as City Manager, has been, and I think we, this needs to be a year that we're not transferring costs over to our taxpayers because they can't afford it, but also we need to be making sure we're not spending too much. So, as Alderman Braithwaite said, we have 20 cars or so that we're buying. I unfortunately was late to APMW, but was gonna make the motion that we take off seven of the police cars. We just got rid of 12 police officers. Do we need seven new police cars? You know, I don't know. I think those kind of things, instead of a little bit, you know, instead of being kind of business as usual, are ways in which we really need to tighten up our spending. Does that get our property tax levy down to zero? I'm not sure, but I think it definitely gets us in a better place than, as Alderman Rainey said, you know, $10,000 here and $20,000 there. And then back to the comment Alderman Revelle made about the bond rating. I appreciate that, but for me, there's a lot to, you know, I wanna have good credit, that's very important, but, you know, do I want my neighbor to go into foreclosure? No. So, I mean, you know, her foreclosure also impacts my housing values. So, I think- you know, do I want my neighbor to go into foreclosure? No. So I mean, you know, her foreclosure also impacts my housing values, so I think as much as we want to have AAA, I think, you know, we haven't really had, for me, I haven't had a concrete answer that if we take money, you know, we don't pay all the pension as we plan to, if we take a half million or a million out of our reserves, that that's going to tank our bond rating. I think we're working in a lot of hypotheticals, um, which I guess makes sense, but people are in dire need, we just gave away five hundred turkeys at the food pantry. I, I won't say every person who came was in desperate need, but I think if you're willing to come and stand in line for a turkey, you have some need. And so I think, I mean, these, these things are really real to people, they're really real to us as well. But I would insist that we just, you know, triple check our, where are we planning on spending money this year? And, and are those costs real? If we're in the pandemic, we're not running all the camps, we're not running all the things that we used to, so the way in which we budgeted for seasonal staff in the summer, for camp supplies, for plantings, for variety of things. You know, I think my residents would be okay not having such beautiful streetscapes if it, if it meant that they weren't going to pay um, an increased property tax. So I, I think we have to be real about our spending, as much as we have to be real about um, you know, our bond and, and everything else. So I, again, I'm going to say that we don't need to pay extra to the, to the pensions, I don't think we need to put the half, you know, the half million or even the million into reserves. Um, I think we can take some more money from the police and the training, because one of the trainings I looked at was dealing with the media, well, you know, I don't know, we need to have that training every year, we only have, you know, limited media outlets and one media contact at the police department, so, and are they offering that training on Zoom? Is that really effective? So those things I know I brought up last time, Alderman Wynn asked for more information about them. I don't know if we got more information about them, but I will continue to push that we have to tighten up our spending. And we also have to look at those rainy day funds because we are in a storm. I, Alderman Wilson, I think you're right, we probably will be in the worst place next year, but right now we haven't used those reserves to pay for people's rents, we're looking at CDBG funds and things like that. So I don't know that those reserve funds that we could use this year to offset the property taxes are monies that we would use next year for rental assistance. You know, I don't think that we even have enough to do that, so you know, I just implore us to be really honest about where people are, be really honest about where we are in our spending. Um, and to, and to make some hard choices and hope that the next council, whoever's up there understands that and carries that over for the value of the citizens, not because they agree or disagree with us as individual council members right now.
Thank you. Alderman Rue Simmons, then we're going to go to Braithwaite, then Fisk, then Rainey, and then Ravel.
Thank you. Um, I'm just saying, I want to explore Alderman Rainey's um, recommendation further, and a combination of that, and then a line item on spending. And as Alderman Braithwaite is asking us to look at um, smaller line item um, values, because we have to, um, we have to address this, this, if we raise our taxes, it's just completely out of touch and not in line with everything that we say that we value in terms of being welcoming and inclusive and wanting a diverse commu- community. We raise our taxes every year. And since I've been here, the discussion is the same, and it's, you know, if we don't raise the tax, then we'll have you know, a higher tax, or it's only twenty dollars um, per hundred thousand or whatever, but what that is translating into is displaced uh, lower and moderate income families that are unable to stay in Evanston because um, it's unaffordable. And an example, as Alderman Rainey talked about businesses in crises, I have a service provider um, from the county trying to find one of our businesses in the ward that's been awarded a grant from the county, and it looks like they were not able to hold on um, long enough to receive this substantial grant from the county. We can't, their, their phone is disconnected. I'm hoping they were just closed today, but this is, this is, these are the challenges that we're dealing with. Um, and they are carrying over from, from previous years, obviously, and so we, I'm not going to be in support of, I mean, I'll just cut to the chase, I'm not going to be in support of any um, tax rate increase. So I'm hoping that we can take the time needed to um, explore some version of what Alderman Rainey is proposing, as well as a combination of um, the things that Alderman, Alderman Braithwaite and Fleming have um, introduced in terms of looking at, at smaller line items to get to the two million dollars that we need to get to so that we don't raise taxes. We just don't have it. The residents don't have it, the businesses don't have it, the, the marginalized community is completely devastated. Um, and we just have to work harder to come up with a solution. We can't leave this meeting, or we can't close out this budget process, having raised taxes, we can't do it. We're already living in a state within the county of, I believe, second highest uh, taxes in the nation. We cannot continue to raise taxes and at the same time say that we're uh, welcoming and inclusive and um, diversity is a goal of ours. So what would be the process? I mean, can we, Alderman Rainey, is that a motion? Is this the process, the part of the meeting?
When I'm called on, I'll make a motion.
All right, thank you.
Right, um, we got Alderman Braithwaite next, and then Fisk.
And do you have me?
I, I've got you, I'm gonna, yeah, I'll, I'll let you and Ravel, and then I'm going to go to Rain, and then I'm going to go to Ian. Okay, so Alderman Braithwaite right now. Is, you're muted, Peter, you're muted.
Still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. No, now we can't. Peter, we can't hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Now you're muted. You're muted again.
I have to call in from my, okay, hold on a second.
We can't hear you.
Peter, try turning your phone off, now, try.
Okay. All right, is that working now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Then I can't hear the volume, hold on one second. You can go to the next person, I'll come back once I figure this out.
Okay, Alderman Fisk.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much. So I, I've, I've got a, a couple of disjointed thoughts here. Um, first of all, about the reserves, I know we've had discussions about uh, our surplus um, uh, assets and uh, selling those. We have not had a discussion about uh, about what we would do with proceeds or what it is that we would want to sell, and that's a conversation for another time. But um, what I would like to do is, I would like to get the reserves back up to uh, the sixteen percent, was that the correct number, Erica, sixteen percent, we want reserves? Or two months of um, it, it's, it, it's, I think it's anything above that, I think if uh, if we do decide to uh, to sell some assets, anything above that amount, I think is certainly worthwhile, looking to invest in, in certain areas in times of need. Um, but I am very, very concerned about what happens um, next year. And, and next year, things are not going to go back to normal next year, I think uh, Alderman Wynn was correct, I did a little bit of calculating myself the other day on, on the earliest that we would possibly see a vaccine here, and it probably is a summer before there's a vaccine available to most people in Evanston, and then it's another twenty-eight days and then you get another one. So it's, it's, we're looking at a, 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 a difficult twenty twenty-one. And at that point, we don't even know what's going to happen and how many years more it's going to take us to fully recover from this. So I, 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 I think it's, um, it's important for us to remember that when we go out to borrow money, our credit rating is really important to us then, and that is important to every citizen in Evanston who is going to have to pay more if our credit rating is lowered. And I don't want to go to somebody next year and ask for uh, another tax increase if we can avoid it. I would love, as Alderman Wilson said, to give folks a, uh, some tax relief at that time, I would certainly commit to doing that. But I really don't see that we have an option right now. Now, we did ask the city manager, this is the city manager's budget, so the city manager um, is, is responsible for presenting a budget to us, uh, we talk about it, we try to figure it out, but we don't try to micromanage, and that's what I'm seeing that we're doing tonight. I, I, I'm, I'm not so uh, critical of that because we are in a tough time and we're trying to get ourselves out of it, but I, I think we have some larger concerns here, and I think our larger concerns are what is the impact going to be on our residents next year? So I think, I think what, what we seem to have come up with so far is a fairly reasonable, fairly um, moderate approach to what our situation is. We, we haven't heard of, um, I don't think we've heard from District sixty-five or two oh two, what they're proposing um, for their, their deficit, but it's, um, I think what we're doing is fairly moderate. And um, the folks in my ward, um, some of whom live in very expensive houses are going to be obviously paying a lot more um, than some of us who live in, in not so expensive houses. Um, and I'm going to have to justify that to them. But I think, I think it is important for us to hold, hold fast. We've made some terrible mistakes in the past by not funding our pension funds. And it has been extremely hard for us to get out of that. And I understand the arguments, and I think that the arguments are um, well-intentioned, but I don't think in the long run that is the right place for us to be, especially at this time. Because we can't promise anyone when we're going to be back to normal and when we're going to see the, not only sales tax revenue, but you know, the, the, the revenue from our, from our restaurants and liquor tax and, and other things. So I'm, I just want to be very, very careful that we don't uh, uh, we don't unintentionally dig our hole any deeper than it already is. So I'm going to support the tax increase and um, uh, hope that the rest of you will think about that a little bit too.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman Ravel?
I, I guess I, I'd like to think that we could still look for some more of these small budget things to more cutting that, you know, as Alderman Fleming mentioned, um, take a tough look at the, some of our spending and making sure we've um, really tightened the belt as much as we can. Um, I haven't had a chance to look at Jim Young's email that he sent, but I guess he has a number of suggestions, um, and I'd like us to at least look at those, I, um, I, I'm really hesitant about um, the idea of our taking money from our reserves and um, and not putting as much into the pension funds as we really should, um. I mean, I think we've, e- each year when the, when the credit rating folks look at, you know, what, what is it going to be our rating, rating for the, for the year, um, for several years, they've all mentioned um, concern about not only the fact that we don't have the, the reserve fund that we should have, and also that we're not um, doing a good job in terms of um, taking care of our unfunded liability in the pension fund, so I'm um, even though I may have sounded a little bit more enthusiastic about it a few minutes ago, I, I do really, I, I'm very troubled about that, and I think um, City Manager's point about the fact that it's a new city council coming in, you know, are the bond rating companies going to say, well, you know, what is this new court council going to be committed um, to doing what the resolution says of the old city council, so, um, and then I guess I had a question going maybe to Alderman Braithwaite's um, suggestion that we look at the capital improvement program, because my understanding is, um, capital improvement programs that we would undertake in twenty twenty-one, we don't see any, taking them out of the capital improvement program doesn't affect our twenty twenty-one budget, it only, we only see it in the twenty twenty-two budget when we start seeing the debt service for uh, the bonds that we have paid for those capital improvement projects, so I, I don't, just a point of clarification maybe at some point, um. Anyway, I've, um, I'm definitely not eager to raise taxes, um, so I would, would like us to do some more serious scrutiny, um, ask the city manager to go through things one more time and see what we can come up with, but um, I'm really concerned about um, the, our pension funds and our reserve fund.
Thank you.
I'm in for a second to, to note the comment on the capital and a couple of other things that have come to mind since we've been talking. So you are correct, we can pare down the capital, it's, it's been pared down, we're usually at about ten million dollars, we pared it down to seven point six million dollars. Anything that we would cut from that would directly reduce the bond payments that would be, we would begin to repay in twenty twenty-two. So while it always is good to look at capital and see if there's anything that we could potentially deter, wouldn't reduce the tax levy that we're proposing for twenty twenty-one. I also just wanted to recap on sort of the efforts that have been undertaken since COVID hit in March, uh, just to review where we started and how we got to the place that we're in today. So going into twenty twenty-one, we had eight million dollar revenue shortfall. So off the bat, we started out with an eight million dollar deficit, and then with the racial equity fund, um, good, you know, focus of the Good Neighbor Fund, we lost another half a million dollars that supports general fund operations. So we started out with an eight and a half million dollar hole, and we asked our staff uh, to do some furlough days, we asked our staff to renegotiate some of our union contracts, which we were able to gain many concessions from the fire department, so they're going to take a zero percent increase for next year and the year after. We laid off twenty-one people who no longer work for the city, some of who had, you know, twenty and thirty plus years of service with us. Uh, we're holding every vacancy that has come up unless it's related to the pandemic response or other critical positions. We went after every grant we could find, we got almost four million dollars in grants to support our response to the F, to the, to the pandemic. And we tried to gain early retirements from our staff by offering health insurance incentives. So we did get a lot of staff who were able to take advantage of having their health insurance paid uh, and in exchange retiring early. And sometimes we had to proactively reach out to staff and ask them if they would be interested in taking something like that, because we knew it would help the bottom line, we knew it would save somebody else's job uh, and potentially help somebody who had been here for long enough to be able to retire. So we took that eight and a half million dollar hole, and now, right now, we're sitting at two point four million. So over six million dollars we've come up with, um, and since, since we started working on the budget in uh, mid-May. So that's, that's some pretty good progress. Um, I understand we would like to see that tax increase be zero. Kate, could you bring up the, the chart again? I have one suggestion that um, might be interesting on our, on our um, proposed tax. So we could, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about, about the reserve. Right now, we have five hundred thousand dollars going into the reserve. If we wanted to take some of that and, and negate the increase to the human services levy, that's two hundred and fifty thousand. We could take half of what we're proposing to put in the general fund reserve and, and put it towards the human services fund, and that would eliminate that levy. We could still put two hundred and fifty thousand towards uh, the reserve. If there was a feeling that the consensus of the council was that we wanted to not put any money into reserve next year, we could take the other two hundred and fifty thousand of it and put it towards some of the debt service increase. So that could take down half a million of the increase by applying it in that way. So if that's, if that's an interesting option that the council wants to take, uh, we could plug those numbers into our chart and see where we end up.
Could we plug those in, please?
Kate, could you reduce the debt service levy by two fifty and reduce the uh, human services fund by two fifty?
Before Alderman Wynn?
I just want to see what it looks like, Peter, please.
Okay.
And Erica, while she's doing that, how much money, if we didn't put any into the cash reserves, uh, how much do we have then in that fund right now? After backing out, what needs to be paid this year from that fund?
Right now, we would start twenty twenty-one with eleven point three million in reserve. Which is about twelve point five percent.
I would, I would just add, we haven't talked about this, but I think, I've never worked for a, a rating agency, lots of friends that work there, but I would think that one of the things they're looking at is how fiscally responsible are you being? They want to see that you have made, you know, other cuts um, in everything. And again, I think if you were an outsider and you came to Evanston, you'd see that we did that. Yes, we dipped into our cash reserve fund, yes, we took a, a pause in refilling it, but we're in the middle of a rainy day, a real disaster. So it's, it's not clear to me that you absolutely get slapped, uh, we just don't know.
And Mayor, I would also-
And Mayor, I would also add, and I'm like, I don't work there, but I would imagine this is something that's happening across the nation. Some municipalities do have funding and they're able to dip into their reserves and it's not impacting them as much. But I imagine there are many municipalities dipping into their funding and. I I don't know if the rating agencies are going to go across the US and. Put everyone into, you know, some kind of detrimental junk bond rating, understanding we are in a pandemic, we're not just deciding. To do this because we don't want to save money.
And we're also, we're also not a community that has B rated bonds right now, we we don't have that kind of rating.
Where are we again, Hatesh on the bond? Are we a double A or a double A minus?
So, yeah, good evening, Mayor, again, we went with the Fitch and we went with the S and P. So S and P, this was our first year and they assigned double A rating. With the Fitch, they maintained our double A plus, which is just a notch below triple A.
So can I can't do the math quickly enough, but could someone tell me what the three point six mil percent increase? In the property tax turns into on that chart that we have? You know, for, thank you, thank you.
Eighteen dollars. Hundred thousand.
What's the, I'm sorry, what is what is the percentage come to with these changes, Kate? Uh uh of the overall tax levy increase?
Three point six.
All right. Can I finish my comment now? Yes, go ahead, Peter. Thank you. Item A four. We have a capital expense of one million, four hundred and forty one dollars and five hundred. If you take the time to go to page one hundred and thirty in our packet. You will see the side by side comparison of the vehicles that we're looking to replace. And the purchase price for the new twenty twenty one vehicles. I want to, you know, thank our staff for putting together. The budget memo and in the budget memo. It outlines the cost of maintaining the video of the the vehicles. Keep in mind, this is our staff being paid. So I think the numbers are a little bit skewed, but the point I want to make is. The capital is right in front of us and. If if this is the dire times, I would love to drive a new car, I'm sure. Everyone else on our city council and and the members that are listening. But here it is, one point four million of vehicles. Given the fact that I don't I don't know what our. You know, what the use is now, just COVID, but. I would venture to say that if we. Cut this. And then if there's a true emergency, we have other areas that we can pull money. But I feel like this is a really. Clear item out of everything that we've discussed thus far this evening. That we can hold. And if we need to purchase something. We'll either find it or credit it, but that's one point four million dollars standing right there. But is it one point four million in the op in the operating budget that really gets us one point four million in the savings, Erica? That's my that's my question. And Hatesh? Yes. And I don't even think we factored the sale of these vehicles, but that's that's what I'm going to make a motion if there's. A second that we look at holding the purchase of item A four, which is one million, four hundred and forty one thousand and five hundred. To get this budget path raising taxes. Okay, a and Hatesh, can you speak to to that if that's? If that one point four million really. Takes care of our budget deficit issue here?
It could, yes, I mean, I I can speak to the like the conditions of the vehicles, but in terms of financial, yeah, I mean, I'm reading it, it's. Two million dollars. Against the budget and we do transfer money from general fund to the equipment replacement fund, so.
So that's not coming out, that's not coming out of capital. The.
It's not, we had only budgeted one item right now.
Okay.
I thought that the police cars were were bonded, I could be wrong, but I thought the police.
No, 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 not fleet.
We just, I think we had only one item for three hundred and fifty thousand, which is budgeted out of the bond money. But the rest of the is like a transfer from general fund to the equipment replacement fund.
All right, Ald Ald Alderman Rainey, did you want to add something?
Did he get a second for that? Because I want to argue.
I did, I did make a motion.
Well, I'll second it.
Go ahead, Alderman, yeah.
Well, I I want to find out, I want I want to find out about a couple of these items, for example. There is. There is a piece of equipment here from Public Works that I want to know about. A John Deere tractor, I want to know if it's replacing something that we can't use right now. There's something. There's a forty thousand dollar, something having to do with. Asphalt recycler that probably fills potholes. There there's some, there's some pieces of equipment here that aren't fancy police, you know. SUVs and I'm concerned about what it is we need them for. Are they replacing a vehicle that is, you know, down and not in service? I mean, here's something that's replacing a nineteen seventy six forklift, I think we need that.
Dave Stonebeck, are you on the call? Can you respond to that?
On the call?
Good evening, Mayor Alderman and City Manager Sterling. Of the Public Works Division vehicles that are on there. The youngest one is only twelve years old. And that's the Refuge Packer truck, which is funded from the solid waste fund. It's from two thousand eight, it's twelve years old and it hasn't a ten year life. So it's already two years past its prime and. It's, that's something that's used every day to collect refuge in. We're also looking to replace the grader truck or vehicle six eighty three. That's a twenty five year old grader that's used to grade the alleys. On a constant basis, it has broken down several times. We get way behind in our alley grading when that vehicle's down. We're also looking to replace vehicle six fifty nine, which is a front end loader, which is twenty years old. That's another vehicle that is basically used every day. The aerial truck is used in traffic, it's one of two aerial trucks that we have, it's been down the majority of the year. It's from two thousand five, it's fifteen years old. The chipper vehicle eight oh three in Forest Street is eighteen years old, that's another vehicle that we use on on a daily basis. You are correct that the hot box trailer that we use is what we use to. Fill in potholes every day. And then the other vehicle that is from Public Works is five thirty two, which is a Jeep from two thousand one, so it's nineteen years old. So all these vehicles unfortunately have already been deferred and deferred and deferred. And I understand our budget's crisis. But some of these vehicles, you know, are are absolutely needed, the the grader is absolutely needed because it it broke down. Last year, we had to rent a vehicle, we had to have this one repaired. And and the sanitation truck, the Refuge Packer seven twenty one. Again, that's coming out of the solid waste fund, it's not a general fund purchase, so. I I highly request that these vehicles at least be considered.
Thank you, thank you, Dave. I would I would just, I would just add. We're in the business of municipal services, of servicing our our residents and I do worry. That if we have, you know, scheduled purchases to buy equipment that, you know, paves alleys and, you know. Clears, you know, garbage and waste that, you know, we make sure that we're providing those municipal services. I personally, I mean, if you had to say, okay, either we cut this expense or we dip more into. The cash reserves, I'd dip more in, personally, me, I would dip more into the cash reserves than cut this. Expense to balance a budget.
And and that's true, these these vehicles are used by employees that are still working every day, it's not like due to COVID. We're not filling potholes, we're we're still cutting trees, we're still collecting refuge. So these are vehicles that we are currently using, they're not sitting in the garage because of COVID.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Dave. Alderman win?
Yes, I think Dave will remember this, I think Alderman Rainey will remember this. One month after I was seated on the council, sixteen of our eighteen garbage trucks were out of service. We had two working garbage trucks. And that was because the councils before Alderman Rainey and I were seated. Had deferred maintenance and deferred maintenance and deferred maintenance. I I had no idea, we arrived one day and got a memo one day and found out sixteen of eighteen garbage trucks. Were not functioning and were out for quite a while. Ever since then, we've been really mindful of that. Of that problem, we do run our vehicles, you can see the cost of repairs, I mean, one of these has been repaired four hundred times. I don't want to be in that position, as Dave said, these are providing services every single day, they're running every single day. If there's a newer vehicle perhaps that we could, some newer vehicles here, we could perhaps extend the life of. I would be willing to do that, but Mayor, I am with you, I would rather dip into the the reserves. Than have to replace garbage trucks on an emergency basis because that's what we had to do. We didn't get garbage picked up for weeks, weeks, and it cost everyone a lot more money because we had. We had to make up for all of those, you know, how, you know, a garbage truck costs a lot of money. Yeah, it was very, it had been very short sighted, you know, you think it would never happen, it happened.
Alderman Braithwaite and then Alderman, Alderman Rainey. I I mean, I don't think I need to repeat the past two hours to make a point, it's one point four million. The likelihood with full maintenance staff of all these vehicles going down at the same. Time, I I I just don't think it's likely. The dollar amounts that we're seeing for the repairs is our own staff fixing them. And if nothing else, it's it's job security and I and. I don't say this to be insensitive, but I think if the staff who are working on the vehicles had to choose between. Fixing the car and keeping or van or truck and keeping them on the road versus their job. Something tells me, well. Use myself, if I was in that situation, if I was in that situation, not addressing it to our staff. I would damn well sure make sure that these vehicles are working to the best of their ability. It's a large number. I realize that. I just think that if we can meet somewhere in the middle and get an understanding of maybe even the twenty seventeen vehicles. That we just wait. And if there's an emergency, then, well, you can credit, but there's capital right here for vehicles that. Maybe can go another year, six months. And then, of course, we haven't even factored what the sale of those vehicles would yield, and I don't know if that was somewhere in the memo, but. That's where I'm going to suggest. If we're all concerned about raising taxes, that's maybe a good place to start. And at some point then, I'll jump into the capital expenses, but. Somewhere we got to give.
I think there is an option to compromise on the ratio that we're spending. For these vehicles, still retain the purchase and shift more of the funding of it from the general fund to the bond proceeds. So perhaps a half a million dollars of this purchase could be added on to capital for next year. Which, of course, we would have to pay in twenty twenty two. But that could potentially reduce the tax levy by a half a million dollars.
I think that sounds good.
See, you've got Kate or somebody working the budget balancing worksheet behind the scenes here on this stuff, okay, Alderman Rainey. You're muted.
You Dan.
Alderman Rainey. And then Erica, why don't you come back to us once you you and the staff have looked at that, what that that midpoint might be?
I disagree with with. Bonding for vehicles that they are not, they they're they're not. They could, they could get hit by a a car or be run into a building, they're they're not, they're not capital expenses. I I don't agree with that, I have a whole list of of these vehicles that we could not purchase this year. Excluding the public works vehicles, we, there's no reason why we have to buy these SUVs this year, they could go for another year or two. So let's let's eliminate them. Peter, I don't give, don't give up on these, I I think we should not. I agree totally with Alderman Win and I I I do remember, I I just didn't remember when, when we had the horrible disaster with the. With the garbage trucks, but. I mean, there's a whole list of hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of cars here that we don't have to buy this year.
I I agree, that's my point.
I agree.
Can't we move to eliminate them? And and leave the the public works trucks intact?
So if we remove out Alderman Rainey, reduce it by five hundred and fifty thousand and then have the people in our fleets decide how to best allocate. The money, then. I will make an amendment to my motion. I guess the question is, are there four other people that, or maybe three other people that feel the same way that we do?
Well, I mean, I I mean. And I don't know.
Let's go to Alderman Wilson, Alderman Wilson then win.
Thanks, so. And I get all these points, every single one of them. But just kind of looking at the. Looking at the at the vehicle lists, we've got a vehicle two sixty five is a newer vehicle. And then we've got some twenty sixteen and newer police cars, so. Maybe we hold off on those on those replacements. But I I I actually don't have so much of a problem with with bond on the public works heavy equipment. You know, if it was coming down to like cutting into reserves or bonding that for those purchases, I would rather. Have the debt to make those those heavy equipment purchases. You know, those are vehicles that are providing. You know, so like I know that alleys, when the when the grader was down, alleys weren't getting done around the city. I had a number of residents who had problems with the alley and had to wait and that's, you know, that's a significant impact on your day to day. Existence, particularly if it's in the winter and you can't get, can't get your car in and out, so. So I'd be okay with with both of those things, taking out those those newer vehicles for the time being and. And then using the debt for the heavy equipment purchases.
Alderman win and then Eric, I'd like you to summarize if you if you could with your staff this, Alderman win?
I I. I agree with half of what Don Alderman Wilson said, I agree with Alderman Rainey, I do not think we, I think we absolutely have to replace those public works vehicles. They are the oldest ones in our fleet, I think, from looking at this list. I I agree with Alderman Braithwaite about the police vehicles or the newer ones. You know, unless they've been in a terrible accident. I I but I'm also, I also share Alderman Rainey's concern about bonding for vehicles. It was something we used to do and we moved away from it very deliberately. So those are my three opinions.
Okay, thank you, Erica.
I was just going to add a couple of anecdotes. Fleet has instituted a new methodology on vehicle usage to sort of rotate these high intense. Vehicle uses that happen in police terms and uses, so even if it says we're replacing. A police car that was bought in twenty sixteen for a new car, that twenty sixteen police car is going to. Either some, either admin services or fleet or facilities or public works that that vehicle is not given to be sold, it's going to be reused in a different department. At a different use, so instead of being a daily use of police, it'll be a, you know, less intense use in a different department. And I, you know, best practice budgeting. And I, you know, best practice budgeting, it certainly is never the first choice to bond for vehicles. But if these vehicles have a life of longer than 10 years and we are seeing historically low interest rates, so the, the cost of money has never been cheaper than it is right now. I would say it would be okay if we were going to do it one time and not for a large amount. So, you know, we could, we could find a compromise here. We could potentially bond 500,000 of this and then I would say let the fleet and facilities staff figure out where to, where to reduce from these purchases, you know, to, to the tune of 100,000 or something like that. That they could probably make those decisions the best and then figure out what to do with what's remaining.
So just so I'm clear, these are on the agenda this evening, right Erica?
Yes.
So we would remove them, we would remove them from the agenda. You're, we look at staff will come back with a $500,000 savings and that's a 2020 savings that basically then you're going to roll over to 2021. Is that correct?
What I'm suggesting is that we consider bonding for the 500,000, considering the low cost of borrowing. And then consider a reduction of $100,000. So if the, if that was in agreement, we could look to strike a couple of those vehicles in time for the consent agenda later tonight. And then that would reduce our tax levy by another 600,000.
Okay, Alderman.
So that, I appreciate that, but back to I think my earlier point and on our breakthroughs earlier points, I, when I came to file my petitions the other day, you know, our parking lot was full of white cars, right? Everyone's not working. Everyone who was driving last year is not driving. I didn't do an assessment. I don't know exactly where, you know, those cars are, if they're even on this replacement list. But as my point was earlier, you know, we were buying seven new police cars, yet we have let go of eleven police officers. So are we sure that we need those seven cars right now, right? And even if those cars are going to rotate down to another department, are those departments in need of a car now or are those people still working from home? And as we've all said, we anticipate being still in some kind of COVID non-vaccine, not everybody back in the building for probably at least half of next year. So even if we're rotating a police car down to someone else, does that person need a car? Are they in the office driving around town doing their local, your regular business? So again, I, I would still push that that is a cost in which we need to look at based on where we are in the pandemic. So you know, if we have eleven less police officers, I imagine we have some cars over there that we don't need and we don't need to replace. If we don't have staff in the building, we don't need, you know, 25 new Ford focuses or whatever we have on the agenda. I know it's not 25, but so I still am going to keep pushing that we need to make purchases and we need to do our spending based on where we are right now. And everyone is not working right now in the building and everyone maybe historically has needed access to a car doesn't need it, or if they've needed access to a SUV, can they drive a Ford Focus for six months of the year? You know, I don't know. I don't work in all these departments, but I, I just want us to push a little harder. And I know Alderman Braithwaite has for years talked about the vehicle purchasing and asked for more information with that. I appreciate that they're, they're looking at it a different way, but I did speak to Sean Cholick about a couple of these things and I was like the APW and I just think we, there's still room to push harder. Not necessarily based on what we've always done, but where we are right now.
Hitesh, did you want to say something?
I mean, no, the Erica has touched on that. I mean, there could be other option where at least in the short term, it would reduce the tax levy by bonding at least the public works vehicles. And that would be great because the payments would start and obviously it would be pro rata over 20 years. So that could definitely help. Around half a million or whatever the amount is, that amount of the public works vehicle if we bond them.
Can we, can we as a group, look at the budget balancing worksheet so we can sort of see where we are, Erica?
Sure. Kate, you want to pull that up?
All right. So Kate, or why don't you walk us through and sort of summarize? So it looks like the 500,000 is what we were just discussing. So now that's a decrease.
Sure. So that's how I plugged it in, just to start with that, you know, the, the initial proposal from Erica that we would use this plus to support the human services fund and debt service fund so that we could, you know, bring the tax increases down there.
And then And just so, just so everybody's clear, that, that move right there was removing the 500,000 that we had previously set aside in this budget for replenishing the cash reserves or the fund balance that we carry.
Correct.
Okay, so that, so now we are putting zero, now we are putting zeroing. Got it? Okay.
What I just threw in here, based on the conversation, but these numbers can obviously change, is to reduce or transfer out of the debt onto the replacement by 500,000 and reduce property taxes in an equal amount, again, keeping us at a balanced budget in the general fund. We, the transfer amount in the general fund in this version of the budget, as it's been proposed this evening, is 1.1 million. So the 500,000 would reduce it, you know, from that amount. And then the impact on property taxes that leads to is down to a 2.7% increase, again, taking into account that new decrease in 500,000 to the general fund tax levy.
All right. So now we're down overall to a 2.7% tax increase.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, Alderman.
So I, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear on this. So that that was removing the $500,000 or for the public works equipment to be bonded. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that, 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 this change here that we see on this does not include deferring the purchase of any of the equipment that was on that list. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we, we, there is an opportunity possibly to, and maybe Alderman Braithwaite, you had a, an idea of allowing the public works or the the service center to determine which vehicles we would not
Correct.
Keep, okay, so
Correct.
There is possibly, possibly a little more savings here that we could achieve? Is that correct?
By just reducing it by, correct, the overall item on A4 by 400,000 and then allow for a million. That way it's a more balanced approach.
Okay. All right. I understand now. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Alderman Win for raising the question.
So Erica, is that true? Is there another $400,000 of possible savings there?
I think that is coming from the thought that some of these vehicles don't need to be replaced. So if the council wanted to further reduce this list, I would suggest putting a dollar amount out there. You know, I think our, our staff is doing their best to be judicious with the limited dollars that they receive. And like Dave alluded to, you know, we're pretty far behind on our replacement cycle. So I'm not, I'm not saying that staff's putting anything out that they don't think absolutely needs to be done. But if the council wants to further reduce the equipment that we're purchasing, I would just suggest maybe putting a dollar amount out, whether it's 100,000, 200,000, 400,000 seems like it would be a lot. But whatever the council decides, our fleet staff will then make a determination of what's the highest priority and then adjust accordingly.
Erica, I would just say, because I know
I'm gonna move
Go ahead.
I'm just gonna move the 400,000. I mean, I can do the, the quick math on any vehicle that is 2015, 30,000 times 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. It's only 210. Can we say 400,000?
I know our fleet manager is on the call, so I would just like him to explain if there's any ramifications to that number.
Good evening, Mayor and City Manager, members of the council. So I think there is a little room to accommodate some of these requests. The one thing that I would be cautious about is that we don't, that we keep in mind that there's a long lead time for a lot of these public works pieces of equipment. So I think that if we were able to take out 400,000, it would still allow us to be able to move forward with a lot of this long lead time equipment. The, the front end loaders, the graders, some of that, that heavier construction equipment. And that would, that would probably make a big difference. But I do want to also caution that, you know, we made good headway in trying to get on top of the, you know, the, the fleet fund being used properly and, and making sure that we could get caught up on neglected items that, that, you know, as you could see, some of these items were, they're, they're 20, 25 years old. So I would be cautious about, you know, trying to cut too much, but I think that 400,000 would be something that we could at least start with and reconsider if we were able to move forward some of these public works vehicles and some of the other items.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite, for your work on this and Sean for the feedback. Just question, Alderman Braithwaite, the way you are moving it at the 400K, is that protecting or setting aside the public works vehicles that are doing the municipal work that we are actually responsible to do? Or is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the
It's separate.
Yeah, to answer your question, it's consistent. Yes, yes, Alderman Simmons is consistent with Alderman Rainey and what Alderman Win is saying. So we're going to prioritize the larger public works vehicles. And then for the newer vehicles that may not take that same type of beating, it gets us to where we need to be.
Okay.
Alderman Rainey?
Just to be clear, the 400,000 excludes the public works vehicles. Public works vehicles are, are going to be covered by capital expenditure. Isn't the 400,000 the remaining vehicles?
The 400,000 is going to be a cut that we ask the fleet to make and they will select which vehicles.
But they're not, didn't we select out the public work vehicles that Dave talked about?
Yes.
Okay, so that, they don't, that's not part of the 400,000.
That's, yes.
400,000 are the remaining vehicles after we've, after Dave has selected out the public works vehicles that are going to be covered under the bonds.
Yes. Uh, correct me.
I don't, I don't know, Melissa, I, I have a lot of respect for you, but I want to make sure that those who are doing this are, are telling me.
Yes.
I don't think Sean understood what we're doing here.
I understand what you're doing and
Yeah, I understand.
Correct reduction to the equipment replacement fund, the 400,000.
But the 400,000 doesn't include all the public works vehicles, right?
No.
That's separate.
That's correct. So we would probably adjust some of the purchases for tonight and then some of that money would come out of future purchases that would, aren't yet on the agenda for 2021.
And Erica, we just want to make clear that we already have budgeted for 350 out of bonds, out of total 1.4, only 1.1 million was transferred.
Right. I follow. So Kate, do you want to bring up our sheet one more time and see where we're at on the tax levy?
Sure. And my understanding that that reduction to the equipment replacement fund is, is 400,000, that's why I I'm at that now.
Correct. 500,000 would be bonded, 400,000 would be a reduction.
Okay. I'm sorry. This is where we stand on the tax levy at this point, which is a 2.9% increase.
But that's not showing the 500,000 that we just reduced by the, it should be a 900,000 overall reduction from the general fund.
I mean, this is not right.
No, this is, this is including the $400,000 increase. I'm sorry. So you're saying the general fund will be reduced by both 500,000 and 400,000?
Correct.
That would leave us with only 200,000 being transferred to the fund and, and so we would be increasing our amount of, of bonds as well. Am I understanding that correctly? Okay, I'm sorry.
So that, it would go down by 900,000.
Okay, so then that would be 1.9 million or 1.9%.
So that takes our total property tax increase to under 900,000, down from 2.4 million.
So total property tax increase, yes, it's, it's a million overall when we look at all the funds of the city.
So now this is assuming 850,000 Erica in the bonding for the vehicles.
Correct.
Could we see the, Kate, would you put up the, the chart that shows per 100,000 as well?
Yep. And let me just stick current number, which is now 1.9%. So it would be about $9 per 100,000.
Can we go back to the other one, Kate?
Yep.
All right. So we still, still have a tax increase here. Go ahead, Peter.
No, I'm just trying to figure, I'm looking on the charts to figure out what's the overall. Cause I'm, I'm looking and it says it's negative 900 going to the general fund. Correct?
Taking it out.
Correct.
And so then where else could we potentially save to bring it to neutral? So we're not increasing by any amount.
So for that, we just need to come up with another either cuts or, yeah, I guess cuts to get 1,071,992, right? Kate, we just have to come up with that number. It doesn't have to be on those specific area, areas, right?
Yep, that's
What is it, 1.7?
1,071,000.
It's 1,000,000 dollars.
1,071,000.
So then Mr. Mayor, as a matter of procedure, can we then, can we first then vote on or make a recommendation or a motion for item A4? And then from there, if members of council would agree, we then look at the capital budget to see if we can find any additional projects and and items that could be deferred an additional year.
I think you moved in second it already, Alderman Rainey seconded. We just need a voice vote, a roll call.
So then I'll restate the motion and then call the question, but there are two motions. One is to reduce item A4 by 400,000. And then there's the piece that our city manager recommended in terms of taking an additional 500 out of the remaining million to be bonded. Did I state that correctly, Erica? Cause then I'll move it for action.
It's mostly correct. It's just that the 400,000, a portion of it will be taken out of tonight's purchase and a portion of it will be taken out of the of the allocation for the 2021 budget of the equipment replacement fund.
Is everybody clear on that?
Yes.
Are we ready then to call the question?
Yes.
All right, just call the question. City, city clerk, you take the roll.
Yes, Alderman.
Could you please repeat the motion?
So the first half of the motion, Alderman Fisk, is to reduce item A four, the fleet budget, by four hundred thousand dollars. And then the second half of the motion would be to bond five hundred thousand dollars out of the remaining one million dollars that's in the budget.
Excuse me, Mayor, we'll we'll need a second on the, on the amended motion. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay, we'll get that.
And should we withdraw the first motion or?
Any way you guys want to get there.
Why don't you withdraw the first motion and just make the new motion and I'll second it.
Thank you, Don. I'll withdraw the first motion and then the second motion still stands unless you want, do you need me to restate that?
So as I understand it, you are moving that we reduce the 2021 fleet budget by four hundred thousand dollars and
Item A four.
Remaining balance, of the remaining balance, five hundred thousand dollars of that will be funded through issuing bonds. That's my understanding of the motion.
That is correct.
Okay, so I second that.
Seeing no discussion, city clerk, please take the role in that motion.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Winn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
All right, so in a nine to zero vote, that motion passes to reduce the 2021 fleet budget by four hundred thousand and then bond five hundred thousand of that, of the budget purchases, vehicle purchases for 2021. All right, nine to zero. Okay, thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
All right. Thank you to Sean and Dave. I know that we put a hu- huge demand on behalf of our residents. I mean, you all have taken furloughs. And just thank you for making the concessions to, to get us to where we are. Can we now move to the capital? The capital budget?
Can I ask a question before we do that? We need to find if the council wants no tax increase, one million seventy-one thousand dollars. Can that be found in the capital budget?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Erica or Hitesh?
Yeah, as we discussed earlier, if any reduction in the capital budget will have no effect on the property tax increase would just not have done service for the, for the following year.
Okay. Okay, well, let's find another role then. I'll withdraw the request then.
What about the initial request, Alderman Rainey's request?
So we did half of her request, the five, the five hundred thousand has been removed that was budgeted for 2021 for the reserve fund. We haven't moved on the second five hundred thousand where she was saying dip into it, and we have not yet moved on the pension reduction. Let me, Alderman Fleming has her hand up, so let me go to Alderman.
All right, I'm going back to pension reduction because again, as I continue to say, last year, if we go back to last year's tax amount, which will be zero for this year, we're still paying a bit over the pension. I know we keep talking about paying a lot over, which would be great, but we don't have a lot over. So if we go back to what we were paying last year, we're at about two percent over. And I still think we need to consider the Good Neighbor Fund for Northwestern, it's a million dollars. Even if they want to use it for racial equity, they can use half of that for racial equity since we do not have racial equity plan at this point. You know, we can use a half million or so for that and still have some money to get some of our racial equity work done, but we don't have a racial equity plan. And racial equity can be not having a tax increase because we want poor and minority people to be able to stay in town.
So I guess I, I have
Got a motion? Are you going to make a motion on the?
Yeah, I'm happy to make the motion if you guys, yes, I can make, can I make two motions at once? I'd make a motion if we
The motion, isn't there a condition with the money? I mean, isn't it given in good faith that it's used for racial equity? And I mean, I guess you're suggesting we define equity as in, you know, balancing our budget, but I don't know that it's appropriate for us to decide that we're not going to use it in the spirit in which it was given.
Well, I think what I'm proposing, well, I'm happy to make the motion for the pension because we can make that decision.
I agree.
Northwestern Fund, Ms. Richardson explained to us that it's not yet figured out what they mean or how we use the money for racial equity. I think we could make the case to them that this is how we would like to use some of the money for racial equity, which is we understand the tax burden, particularly if you're, you know, low income, is, you know, is adding to us losing some of our diverse for elderly population. So I guess you're right, I can't necessarily make a motion for that usage because there's, it's not in our purview as a council. But I can make the motion for the pension.
I would, I mean, so yes, I mean, I just want to say that I wouldn't support using that money for anything other than racial equity and just looking forward to accelerating whatever that use is going to be or the program is going to be. But I would support your pension motion.
Would you support some of them? I said it's a million dollars from Northwestern if we used half a million for the direct programming, whatever that is, and then a half a million for?
I wouldn't support any money intended for racial equity being used for anything other than racial equity initiatives that specifically are going to have a measurement of equity and justice as it relates to our racial minority groups in town.
Okay, so I will make the motion that we do not increase the pension, sorry, police and fire pension payments this year. So on the property tax levy, and I don't have to screen up in front of me to know what that percentage is. I'm sorry, I can't.
I second it.
So Alderman Winn's got her hand up, and then I have a question of how much money would that be, Hitesh? Like, what is, is the savings if the council opted to fund just at the, at the state minimum level?
It's just six hundred thousand dollars is all.
Six hundred and three thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars.
That's how, that's how much of a savings it would be?
Yes, all that will leave us on the tax levy is the debt payment, which is, I think, one point two million.
No, no, are we, are we talking about, let me, Mayor, just let me clarify. I think the Alderman is proposing to keep the levy flat for police and fire. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So that's the total five hundred and eighty-five thousand increase, so which would go down by that amount, yes, five hundred eighty-five thousand.
So that would be five hundred and eighty-five thousand.
I think it's more than that. There's going to be
All right, let's go to Alderman. So this is for discussion. Alderman Winn?
Okay, I, I am confused. I know that there is the state mandated amount, which is much too low. And then we heard from our actuary last week about failing to maintain the level payment that we have been making, the is, will only result in higher taxes as soon as next year. So I am trying to understand, Alderman Fleming, can you clarify what, what your motion is?
Yes, so my motion is to keep it flat. It was my understanding, and Hitesh can correct me if I'm wrong. If we keep it flat and contribute what we were contributing last year, we still are contributing, I think, one point nine percent over the state. So again, I'm, I'm not proposing this is the best plan in America, but we are not contributing what the state, you know, we're not contributing the state minimum, even if we keep it flat, we're one point nine percent over the state. So Hitesh, if we went up this year, we're still not, whatever, maybe two point two five or something percent over.
I mean, Alderman Fleming and Alderman, yeah, first thing first. We have a proposed increase of combined five hundred eighty-five thousand for this year compared to last year. So if we say we want to keep the levy flat, that would be five hundred eighty-five. Now, how much we are contributing more than the state minimum, it's roughly two point eight million dollar more combined for police and fire, which is the difference between the state minimum mandated and what we are contributing.
So Hitesh, can you do a calculation on then by, by failing to maintain the number that we were, that we had planned to, to contribute, what that does, how do we catch up next year? I mean,
I mean.
What are the costs next year to catch up? It's a, it's whatever we were planning to pay next year plus this five hundred thousand, right? Plus something else.
Right, so I mean, yes, again, I mean, I hear that the conditions and at the same time, when I look at from my finance director head as a word called rating agency, I think it is a worst idea to go back to the state minimum, yeah. I mean, yeah, at least we can think about and council can entertain to keep the levy flat at least, which is just a five hundred eighty-five thousand dollar decrease.
No, I, so I'm not even talking, I, I understand about the rating agencies, and I understand that they may not frown on this as much. But what I want to know is then what happens when we try to do the catch up? Because last week, Mr. Franzen was explaining that catching up means not just catching up to pay the, to, you know, not just paying the amount that you once owed, but then you have to pay even more on top of that. And that can happen as soon as next year. And I, so I want, I want information about that.
Obviously, so what happens is like we already have unfunded liability. So the, this amount would be added by like, suppose if you decide to keep the levy flat, so additional five hundred eighty-five thousand, and obviously there is a compounding interest on that. And obviously, that's split over the remainder of, like, we have a ninety percent requirement by twenty forty. So it's roughly kind of divided over twenty years, the total unfunded liability.
Okay, so to get back, so let's say we, in order to reach the level that we would be at next year. Yeah, okay, so in 2022, if we wanted to be with our pension payments where we would normally be, where we would have been but for COVID, how much more are we going to have to tax people to get back up to that level in only two years?
I mean, it depends, Alderman Winn, on so many factors. The important thing is the stock market, you know, how they perform. And based on then, obviously, the actual valuations calculated and all other factors, personal matters and all that. But yes, definitely, these five hundred eighty-five thousand, if the council decide, that's added to the already existing unfunded liability. And then there's the interest compounding on that. And next year, yeah, when they actually prepare that report, obviously, that affects that.
So it's going to cost the taxpayer, all of us, more to make up the five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Fisk? Oh, do you have more, Alderman Fleming?
I was just going to say, can we vote? But I didn't see Judy's hand up.
Oh, that's okay. I mean, we can vote. I mean, just quickly, I, I just wanted to say in case the public is watching here. I mean, this is like having paying your credit card, and if you pay only the minimum balance on your credit card, you're not paying off principal. I mean, you're not, you're not, not making a debt in your debt. It's just going to compound and get bigger all the time. That's, that's what my concern is here. So I will not support any, anything other than our, our paying our pension funds very aggressively.
But this is not paying the minimum amount.
Yeah, I know that, I know that.
We're cleaning up for what didn't happen, you know, decades ago around here in terms of putting, putting money in. We're trying to clean up from this pandemic that, that we're in. You know, where my head is sort of on this is, you know, there's lots of objectives that we want to achieve, you know? We want to have a healthy fund balance in case something bad happens, but we're eating away at our fund balance. We want to fulfill commitments that we have been working hard to try and fulfill on the pensions. And do we dip into that too? You know, right now, we've done it on the, on the reserve fund, and I guess I'm just nervous if you do it on both the reserve and the pen, and the pensions. You know, what that's, what that says to bond rating firms and others. I'm very worried about that. I mean, I know, I know where Alderman Ru Simmons stands, but where do others stand? If I can, if I can get Northwestern to let us have fifty percent of this year's, the 2021 Good Neighbor Fund unrestricted, so we could sort of put it towards the general fund like we have in the past where it goes to, you know, youth and young adults and, and fire. Are people supportive of that? I mean, I can make one last ditch effort to them and, and see, and that would be half a million.
I, Mr. Mayor, I, sorry, I'm just jumping in.
Yeah, you'll go ahead.
I, I would rather do that using Alderman, I, I understand Alderman Ru Simmons' argument completely, but I also understand Alderman Fleming's argument on this. I would rather do that than cut back on the pensions at all. Because I feel like once, once we step back, back on the pensions, we're actually digging ourselves into a hole. So I, I can't support reducing the amount that we have committed to pay to the pensions, but I think Northwestern has to hear us on this.
Okay, all right, Alderman Rainey?
You do that, plus get them to pay the six hundred and fifty-eight, actually, it's six hundred and fifty-nine thousand for fire service. And we're golden here. I mean, we've got our, our tax thing, our tax increase covered.
Would you be okay if I could do one of the two?
I, I will never be okay if they won't pay, if they don't pay for fire service.
Okay. I mean, I guess I'm trying to get a sense of the council, like, do I go to, I can
Yes, yes.
I'll step aside. I know you feel that way to I know, I know Winn does. Okay, all right, all right, we'll give it.
Take another five hundred thousand from our reserves, and that's what we need to do. I'll go along with no taking from the pension. But you know, there's a new consolidated pension plan going into effect in what, twenty-two? So we're going to be told what we pay, and that, that'll be it.
And so then also, we're saying yes to taking away five hundred thousand dollars from racial equity initiatives, and we're not saying we take another five hundred thousand from parks or trees or programming or whatever else, but we're, we're saying yes to five hundred thousand dollars away from overdue racial equity program.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying five hundred thousand from reserves.
But I'm saying that you're proposing and you continue to recommend that we look at using five hundred thousand dollars of the committed money restricted and designated and given for racial equity initiatives. And I understand, I understand that, but I, I just want us to be clear on, on the decision that we're making. We're, we're defaulting to five hundred thousand away from racial equity before we look at digging deeper into something else. And I'm just, I'm just asking us to think about that as we express what our values are here in the city.
And I'm just trying to understand if you guys want me to call the university on
No, but it, it sounds like you have majority consensus from the city council that we look to five hundred thousand away from racial equity right now in the, in the height of a racial awakening and all of the commitments that we've made to diversity, inclusion, and race equity, and George Floyd, and all of the marching that we've done. That's what we're discussing right now. So that, that's, that's, that's the, that's the consensus of the council. I just want us to be very clear on the statement that we're making.
But you're not, you're, I mean, we haven't voted on it. You're just speaking for everybody, and you don't get to speak for me. I don't agree with that. I would be okay with, I'd be okay with this tax increase and keeping that money for that purpose. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. But we do have a motion on the pension. I mean, if, if you wanted, like, if you wanted, you know, figure out if it's pension or the other one between the two, you know, that can be a conversation, but it seems to me that they don't add up to the million dollars. I mean, they do, it takes both of them to add up to the million dollars.
Well, why don't we, do we want to, why don't we take a vote on the, on the pension? And sort of see where the council is on that then.
Could the motion be restated, please?
Oh, I made a motion that we have a flat tax, do not have a tax increase for the fire and police pension payment.
That would re- That would result in a five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar reduction in our deficit?
In our tax levy.
In our
Could we vote on that?
Not yet.
Wait, yeah, we have.
I think we're trying to see.
But being as a reduction, that's how it would shape out to be.
Can you show the screen that showed the without it taken out?
Yep.
Yep. This is the amounts.
So the motion on the table is to eliminate the 379,000 extra for fire and the 205 extra for police.
Yes.
Has that been, has there been a second? Okay.
All right, so that's the motion. It was seconded. Uh, city clerk, could you please take the role?
Alderman Brithwaite?
No.
Alderman Wen?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
Ravel?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Brithwaite?
All right. Thank thank you, clerk. So on a five to four votes, it failed to pass to reduce reduce the pensions. Amounts that were on that were there that.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yeah.
Given just given the time and that we still have the development to discuss, the budget does not have, I know it was our goal, but the budget does not have to be passed tonight. Is that correct? Like legally, we don't have to pass it tonight.
Legally, I suppo I don't think Erica can chime in on this. I don't know if legally it has to be done tonight. If not, then there would be a meeting scheduled for next Monday on the budget, I believe.
I'm just, I I mean, I'm I'm excited by the conversation because I don't want the tax increase, but I don't know if we as a council ping ponging ideas back are going to get us to zero or doesn't make more sense to send it back to the city manager to come back with any other savings or creative ideas she can find versus us spending another hour.
We're at 11,070 dollars or something like that right now.
That we need. We're at 1.2 million. Well, no, we're still at 1.7 because we didn't get rid of the pensions.
It's it's 1,070,000 still, yes.
Right, okay.
All right.
As much as I don't want to have another meeting, unless there's another big ticket item, I have I have some more research. I mean, I think to go back and forth without the amount of time needed to really consider reductions and some other line items, I think it would be difficult. I don't want to make any decisions under under like the clock. If we would have a quorum for another meeting, I don't know what everyone's holiday plans are.
But don't we have a meeting scheduled in December? Could we not do it then? Or do we have to pass it before December?
It has to be passed before then. I understand to get all this material to the to the county, I thought.
Okay.
Alderman Suffertin?
Yeah, I just I want to get clarification on that. My understanding is that the levy has to be filed with the company on the last Tuesday of this budget year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we have until December 29th. That's the hard deadline.
That is the hard deadline, but that is extremely hard deadline for staff. And we, the last time we passed a budget in December, had a lot of tangential challenges to it. So if we could potentially pass the budget in November, be it tonight or next week, Monday night, that would be an ideal circumstance. I guess at this point, I would ask if, you know, given how much progress we've made this evening, is there a consensus on the council that we need to get to zero and continue working on this? Or is there enough progress made tonight to to satisfy where we are?
I would be a no still. I would be a no until we get to no tax increase.
With Alderman Resumés.
Oh, Alderman Suffertin, I mean, Alderman Wilson.
I appreciate that we've made some progress and what I don't want to do is is to cut things to the point where we've already said it. I don't want to risk the ability to provide services. So this is a small. This is a small increase, relatively speaking. I would prefer to not have any increase. But again, I want the city to be in a strong financial position going into next year because I do think that we're going to be asked to be doing more things to help our community. And I want to be ready and able to do that and have the the ability and the funding to do that. So I I would be fine voting on it tonight.
Okay. All right, Alderman Wen? You're muted.
Muted.
Uh, yes, I think that we've we've done some very good work tonight, looking really hard at things that we have to do that that are necessary. And unfortunate that we have to look at during COVID. But like Alderman Wilson, I I don't know. I don't think that we can go, we can get to zero because that's still a lot more money to find in the budget. And I think at this point, that means we are going to jeopardize services. I I don't want to vote yes on a property tax increase, but I also want to make sure that we are ready for what I am certain is coming at us from COVID next year. So I would be, I would find it acceptable to pass the budget tonight with this small, small property tax increase.
All right, do we, does someone want to move a motion on this budget and we can take a vote and see where it stands? Alderman Rainey?
I I would like to move an additional 500,000 from the reserve fund, which is, and then I'd like to speak to it.
Second.
I I believe sincerely that this fund is there for times like this. And for those of you who think it is a dangerous thing to do, I think the remaining, what do we have left in the reserve fund? 13 million? What do we have?
Thought we had 12 million.
Pardon me?
I thought it was 12 million.
It's about 13.
11.3 million is what we have in the reserves.
Hattash, Hattash, can you just read that?
Right, so we ended the 2019 year with 15.8. We estimate around 2.1 million deficit funding for 2020. So which would bring down our fund balance to around 13.7 at the end of 2020. And depending on the councils actually, yeah, so we will, starting point is around 13.7 for 2020.
And so if I take 500,000 out, what will we have?
It's 13.2, considering that there is no deficit spending in 2021. Hopefully, we have enough revenues and all those kinds of things.
All right, all right. So I'm right, 13. We have the $15 million letter of credit that we're not drawing down on. We we are in rather good shape considering our situation. And I I think it's not irresponsible, but I think it's rigid given the given what we're finding the city's condition to be for you not to support this to reduce a bit more the the tax increase, to lessen the increase. I still believe that no matter what you say, that you still have not embraced the lines for food. You might want to talk to Michael Rivera. I think he's on this call, who 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 monitors the the car lines for people lined up to get food. Or you might want to talk to Sicily, who has been very instrumental in organizing them, or talk to Audrey Thompson. Things are really, really bad here, you know? And it's it's fine to say I want to be very responsible and provide for services. Well, this is how you, you know, we need to provide for services. People need our services, but people also need to be able to pay for their electric bill. They really do. And if you think if you think this this tax increase isn't affecting people, that it's just one more thing. It's just like adding one more rock on top of their head. So this 500,000 is not going to destroy the city of Evanston. And also, it might even impress the the rating agencies because we have been so responsible. Our staff has been so responsible. They've given up by by virtue of, you know, furloughs, et cetera, et cetera. And we didn't, we didn't touch the pensions. And and the fire department gave, don't forget, the police department hasn't hasn't ponied up yet. And they need to do that. They really do. So let's 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 give a little here and support another 500,000. And that's all I have to say.
Any comments, thoughts?
So can we see what that?
Well, we know what that would do. That would just put it down to 570,000 for a balance, right? I mean, it seems like we have two, we have two, two ideas that are out there. Alderman Rainey's dipping into the reserve fund. Alderman Fleming's going to Northwestern and seeing if we can get some flexibility in taking 500,000 and applying that to the general fund, leaving us with 500,000 for racial equity in the Good Neighbor Fund for 2021.
Well, you have a second on Alderman Rainey's proposal.
I do.
Okay. All right. So seeing no discussion, we want to take a vote on that proposal, that motion. City clerk, take the role, please.
Alderman Brithwaite? I'm sorry, I couldn't. Alderman Wen?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
Ravel?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk? Sorry, I didn't hear you, Alderman Fisk.
Yeah, I'm, something is happening on my connection.
We can hear you.
Can somebody just repeat what the motion was for me?
Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, the the motion was to use an additional 500,000 from the reserve fund to apply towards the 2021 deficit.
Okay, no.
All right, I want to make sure I I I got all the votes here. The noes were Alderman Wen, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Fisk. Is there any other no? So everyone else was an I to using the 500,000, okay, from the reserve fund. Okay. So, all right. So that motion passes on a five to four vote to use 500,000 from the reserve fund. Erica and Hattash, I just want to confirm, I liked Hattash's second numbers a lot better, but the first time I asked earlier in this meeting, you said there was 11.3 million in the in the reserve fund. This time, you said there's 13.7, taking out the 500,000 would make it 13.2 million. Can you just confirm that?
That is correct. And when I said the 11 earlier, that was because I was taking the 2 million that we were going to spend current year from that. But Hattash had already taken that out.
Okay, all right. Well, I like that number better. I mean, 13.2.
I just caution that we haven't finished 2020 yet. We only have, you know, numbers from August right now, right, Hattash?
Yes, September, yeah.
Over November, December. So if anything happens beyond what we've projected as far as our deficit that right now stands at 2 million, you know, that could bring it down further. So as it stands right now, we think it's going to be down to that 13.7, could be a little more now with this extra 500 coming out of it. It could dip under 12 potentially.
And Erica, just to piggyback on your mayor, that we are going with the assumption that we would have a balanced budget, balanced numbers. When we would get the revenues as budgeted in 2021 and the expenses would be well within the budget, then only the real drop would be the 500,000 which we are trying to take. If the COVID continues and the way we have, and if the impact on revenues is higher than what we budget right now, it could be, yeah, the fund balance could go further down.
Right.
So it's a big assumption that, yeah, we would have the, we would have the actual numbers matched to budget on both revenues and expenses for next year.
Okay.
Just a quick, just a quick correction. Dave, how much do we typically budget for snow removal?
The kicker is snow removal overtime.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
We're already through, we're already through November. I don't want to be the kiss of death, but I'm just curious to know what that number is, and I can't find it in the budget.
Might be snowing tonight.
We can do that number, but I'm asking if we can take a five minute break because Anderson needs to reset the recording.
Yeah, let's let's, can someone make a motion to recess for five minutes?
Motion to recess at 9:50.
City clerk, take the role, please.
Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right, a 90 to 0 vote. The city council's recessed until 9:50 PM. Thank you. Have a motion to resume our meeting after the recess?
I'd like to move a motion that we resume our our public meeting.
Second.
All right, city clerk, could you take the role to resume the meeting?
Yes, Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons? Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Here.
All right. So we got a, we have a quorum to resume the meeting. City manager Storley, can you just give us a recap of where we are right now and?
Yes, Kate, could you please pull up our property tax chart again so I can recap what's been included?
Yes, just.
All right, so definitely look, just look at the third column. That's what we've been going for all night long. So far, we've included a reduction in the proposed allocation to fund the reserves at $500,000. So $500,000 since we've removed. We've changed $500,000 of general fund money that was going to fund vehicle purchases to being bond funded now. We've reduced the equipment replacement fund by $400,000. And then additionally, there has been, there's $500,000 that is coming out of current reserves, drawing down on reserves to the additional, to the tune of $500,000. So that takes our total tax levy right now increase, city portion, $350,000, 0.6%, and then with general assistance at 220. Our total is 1% tax increase to $571,000.
1%, and then can we see the other chart on the effective amount this would be for residents?
Yep, and this, I think, is still 0.9. So let me just. And this would now be the impact.
$4.85 per $100,000 of property value.
Correct.
All right. All right. So the question to the alderman, if I can see, thank you, Kate, if we can take the screen down, I can see everybody. Okay. So the question to the alderman is, you know, do you, so we got a 1% tax increase right now. There've been some that have said they don't want any tax increase.
Can you put back that chart, Mayor, as we're, as you're speaking? Can we just look at the chart?
Sure, sure. It would mean coming up with another 571,000 in cuts to not have a deficit. The council, just to recap, voted, unvoted, fired. voted, voted five to, voted five to, it voted four to five, so it failed to reduce the amount of money put into the pensions. So that was considered in that, and that did not pass. What do you want to say?
Down for a household?
Mayor, I have a question, just based on that last number you gave. Looking at the form, we still have the 1.2 or whatever it was. I'm sorry, I can't see it in front of me. For the debt service, which you're saying if we find another.
571, because they're going to just transfer money out of the general fund into cover the, I'm guessing Erica can, or Hattash, but they'll transfer money out to cover what you're seeing in those others. So it's just that bottom line that you're looking at.
And so can we revisit the pension? Is anyone else willing to go pension? I can only see Melissa, so I don't know if it's worth calling that vote again.
So does anyone want to move any new motions? And it could include, if you want to move a motion to try to, try to pass the budget, you can try to move that motion too, and we'll see where it stands.
I guess for those that are a hard no, can we go back to the households again? So with the highest amount for someone with a million dollars, the estimated city is $48 divided by two every six months. Can we live with that?
Here, here's my issue, Peter, and I don't want to be a total pain in the ass about it. That is so much better than when we started off, so I do applaud our work there. I think we don't control this, but we also can assume there's going to be an increase. I know 65, 202, I think, they're already proposing increase. I don't care, I could not find 65's increase. The county, I think, has said they're not going to do an increase. And again, this just to me still comes down to have we done all we can to not overspend and to cut where we can. And I, and I understand we're going to probably disagree on that, but, you know, many, we know that many police and fire are not, they get several pensions. They can go, their pension system is set up that they can retire from here and somewhere else and collect two pensions. I don't know how many people are doing that currently who we're paying. But again, I, you know, this is the time we're going to show our residents, we've done all we can.
Can we point back to you back there? Thank you.
As Ann mentioned earlier, the police still have not come, and I don't know where we are with negotiations, but they still have not come with the concession. All of our other unions have. And so I, I would push that we can, you know, lower that pension, or Erica, if you can give us an update, if we think we're going to hear anything from, from police this year in their concessions. But I think we owe it to our citizens to do all we can, even if we don't love it, to get them a zero.
So Alderman Fleming, would you consider this? Again, so this is $48 on someone that owns a million dollar. I think if, if our goal this evening for everyone that's listening is to make sure that we take care of our most vulnerable residents, at $500,000, a half a million, you're paying an additional $12, and well, do the math, 12.
No, I get that, Peter, and again, as I'm saying, I, I.
I know, but here, if I can make my point not to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Our, our city levy is 17%, 17 cents on every dollar. The rest is at the district. I'm, I'm getting close to being okay with this because if you're paying $500,000 for a mortgage, are you vulnerable? I don't, I don't know. $24 may not throw me or anyone else out of my house. And I guess the same way our residents were really good in advocating to us over that 17%, we then encouraged them to go to the districts, which is not even represented. But my concern is if we cut anymore, in my comment with pensions, someone's career choice is different from our financial obligations. So again, someone chooses to be an officer, they choose to be a fireman. That's, that's not up for debate, but our obligation is our obligation. And I don't want to go anymore into reserves. I don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we're looking at pensions. So I'll ask the question again to those that are a hard no. Look at the numbers in front of us. Do you feel comfortable with our 17% of the budget that we leveraged for every dollar, going back to our residents and said we did the best that we could without compromising services or staff personnel? And now we need to turn our advocacy to District 65 and 202.
So I'm one of the hard. I would think I don't agree we did the best we could then. I guess that's what my answer to your question will be. Right. And I'm also one of the hard nos. I don't, I, I, I agree we can get to zero, and I'm not as concerned about answering to what the districts are doing. I'm a lot more interested in us leading by example and showing the community what is possible in a governing board and in municipal government and in elected roles. And we can get to zero. We're so close. So I, I would continue to be a, a hard no. And I know that I was away, did I miss a vote when I came back?
Okay.
Okay. All right. So I mean, no, I mean, we, every year is just a couple more dollars. It's just a few more dollars, and every year we have a declining, you know, minority community, black community specifically, I know about those numbers specifically. So it's, we're so close. Let's just keep doing the work. And hopefully Northwestern is seeing how hard we're trying and will consider making more of a contribution to be a, a real partner to the city. And one thing I'll bring up just real quick, Alderman Brithwaite, to your point. These numbers are the, are the numbers, but we also know that people who live in, and you mentioned this earlier, people who live in apartments and commercial buildings, they are going to be taxed higher. And we know, we should assume those landlords are going to pass that tax on rental increases. So I don't know if that comes out to $4 or what that comes out to, but this is also on top of our increase to the trash we've put in and just other life increases. You're right, we don't control the district, but I think we should factor in, although we're saying ours is $4.85 per $1,000, that is in conjunction with everything you pay for living in the city of Evanston. Whether your kids go to school here or not, it's, it's all one tax bill, and people are going to feel the increase. So I think we need to be very mindful of that and not just, I can't just tell people, well, it's just $4. Because it's $4 in conjunction with everything else. We're, you're sure you're getting tickets, I mean, emails about the $75 parking tickets people are pissed about, the increase in parking meter fees. I mean, it's, it's all one person.
I can't, again, we're looking at the, there we go. Now I can see, now I can see everybody. Alderman Fisk and then Alderman Rainey.
Madam City Manager, could someone please reassure me how we're going to build up the reserves?
It's all order. We have a lot of work ahead of us. We've, we've cut into the, we started out the proposed budget with a million dollar contribution to the fund balance. We've now eliminated a million dollar contribution, and then we dipped into $500,000 of the reserve. So, you know, we, we've certainly got options. We've got to look at sale of city assets. We've got to look at, you know, consolidating and rightsizing our portfolio of real estate. Those are all things that we can look at throughout the course of next year. But it's going to take some discipline, and that, that discipline has to, you know, remain until we get to 16.6% because we have not, like I said, been there in six years, and it may be even longer. So it's, it's one of those things that we keep saying we're going to do it, and then other things get in the way, and it's never a good time to shore up the reserves. So hopefully we can commit to that, pass a resolution at our next meeting, that that's our commitment and, and commit to fund it at a level that ramps us up to getting it fulfilled in two or three years.
Yeah, I, I mean, I really have to say that the, I, I support what everyone's talking about. I know everyone is really well-intentioned. I have always looked on our fiduciary responsibility to our community as, as the, my most important goal. And I'm concerned about this, and I'm concerned about it's, it's that there isn't a clear way forward. If I can get a, at least a commitment that folks are willing to look at using the sale of city assets to bolster our reserves and that there would be a minimum of 16 million, whatever, 16.6 million or whatever in there, and that is the very bare minimum of that, I would be supportive. But I, I am extremely, extremely concerned because now we're just talking about a few dollars. I mean, we're not, and I understand that a few dollars are very important to some people, and I'm not diminishing that at all, but in, in the long run, I think we're harming more people than we are helping. Unless we address this problem head-on and figure out how we get ourselves out of this hole.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, Judy, Alderman Fisk, when we sell our city assets, we have to be willing to be responsible and, you know, support turning the sale of those city assets into something very positive that will expand our tax base. And so that's always something that we have difficulty doing. But my question is, do we have any control over the library funds?
We have control over the library.
The reason I'm, pardon me?
We have control over the library levy.
Over the library what?
Levy.
Okay, all right. So how come, how come the library closed branches and their library, the library levy is exactly the same for 2021 as it was for 2020? I don't understand.
They have salary increases contractually obligated for their employees, and I can only imagine that other expenses are rising despite the fact that they've closed branches. So in, in order to not have a tax levy increase this year, they're, you know, using the reserve and holding flat.
But they, they don't have, they don't have the facilities to operate?
Yeah. I, I would have to ask Karen Danzig-Lions to come to our next meeting.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sorry. I was just going to say I would have to ask the library director to come to our next meeting and explain how she's arriving at her numbers.
So it's a little unusual. We have the budget, and there's nobody representing the library here?
Karen's here.
Karen's here.
Cool. Excellent.
Welcome, welcome, Karen. Looks like you're in a library, all the books behind you.
That was the idea.
So could you explain to us, Karen, why it's the same?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, clerk and director Storley, or city manager Storley. Karen Danzig-Lions, your library director. We've, as everyone else has this year, we've had expenses on budget expenses around COVID. And if you've been in your libraries, you'll see all of the Plexiglas and the hand sanitizers and the thermometers and all the work that we've done for that. Our, our prices increased. We have the budgeted increases that are for the salaried employees, and we have to pay for that. Book prices go up every year. And so by saving the lease cost of the Chicago Avenue Main Street branch, we've applied that to COVID and to salary increases. I asked our, our team to try and keep this tax lovely flat, knowing it's going to be a tough year for everyone. And yet the expenses have gone up. So that is the reason.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So what's on, what's on the table is other ideas on how to get the $571,000 savings, so there's no tax increase or anyone, you know, willing to move the budget as is. All right. So Alderman, Alderman Nguyen?
Unless someone else is ready to go, I will move the budget as it is.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So we have a first and a second to move the budget. City Clerk, could you take the roll?
I'm sorry, can we, can we have the motion include the new fund statement? It's in the ordinance, and I can give you that number.
Oh, yeah. So, so Alderman, yeah, Alderman Nguyen, if you can move, if you can move the, the whole SP1.
Let's see. Kate, I couldn't quite hear what you just said.
Yeah, I said, I've got, I've got a new number for you that if you want to move SP1, we can get, I can give you that new number to, to use as the motion.
Okay. I, I move SP1 ordinance 110020, approving the 2021 fiscal year budget of the city of Evanston in the amount of, what's the new number?
140.
I can't understand you, Kate.
You're all broken up.
All right.
Sorry.
Kate, could you please put it in the chat?
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erica, you have that number now.
Yeah, that was clear. After all that.
200, so I move the budget in the amount of 296,146,000, and I missed the last portion.
$104.
$104.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. City Clerk, could you please take the roll on SP1 ordinance 110-0-20, which is the approval of the fiscal year 2021 fiscal year budget for the city of Evanston?
Yes, Alderman Brithwaite?
No.
Alderman Wilson? I'm sorry, Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson? You're muted, Don, but I, I think you're saying aye.
Aye.
Alderman Ruse Simmons?
No.
Alderman Suffertin?
No.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
And Alderman Fisk?
No.
All right. So the SP1 ordinance 110-0-20 fails to pass the city council on a five to four vote. All right. So where do we go from there, Erica, since, since it's failed?
Well, we can continue to dip into reserves even further, or we can hear additional suggestions, or we can schedule another meeting for next week.
Well, point of order.
Alderman Rainey?
The only reason, only way we can continue this is if somebody on the prevailing side moves to reconsider. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if no one on the prevailing side moves to reconsider, then what, what is that? What is the status?
Corporation council can weigh in, but we would not have an approved budget for 2021, and we would not be able to provide the services.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, sitting at your store lease, the council clerk, clerk Reed. I wanted to, can you all hear me?
Yes.
I wanted to inform you that in, by state statute, the state statute technically gives a municipality a the state statute technically gives a municipality until the end of Q one to pass a budget. However, because the state has declared a state of emergency, we are required to pass a budget in full by the end of this year. So we are cutting it close to the end of the year. So I just wanted to give the council that warning. But we would have to bring this back on the agenda if it does not get reconsidered tonight for another meeting.
So somebody who voted no tonight will have to move to reconsider.
Correct.
And can they move tonight to reconsider? And can we then?
No, that's what she said, tonight.
It has to be moved tonight.
All right. Would anyone on the prevailing side?
Working on it and get to a zero increase, right? Tonight.
Well, we've already voted no. I mean, you voted no.
Right.
Somebody has to move to reconsider right now in order for us to continue working on it.
Oh, incorporate.
So if if no one votes to reconsider, it could just come back, the city manager could present it just a different budget. It wouldn't preclude us from voting on a budget in the future. She could just bring back a new budget that would likely incorporate the things we could continue to discuss and incorporate the things that would get it to a majority vote of the council.
Technically, it would have to be a different proposal.
Right. It would be a different proposal.
So if someone wants to make a motion.
Just went blank. We can't hear you, Kelly. You have to repeat yourself.
Alderman.
Kelly, we can't hear you.
All right, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought I had made this clear before, but maybe I hadn't made it clear. I I honestly feel that I I need in order to support this budget, I need to have a way forward in terms of restoring money to the reserves. And it doesn't have to be money out of this pocket right now. What I need is a plan. I need to have a commitment that that's something that we're going to talk about and talk about soon. Now, if we will do that, I will vote to support this budget. But without that, I really can't do that.
Okay, Alderman, when?
Well, Alderman Fisk, I share your very, very serious concerns about getting this these reserves back up. Clearly, they were essential to us this year. And and we this is this is truly our rainy day fund, and I I don't know whether we'll ever you know, how much longer this will take. So I do agree. And I think that we are considering, we're in discussions to to sell some of our city assets. We've talked about this over the years. We have a lot of city assets, considering the size of the city that we are. And I would agree with you that I think we should commit to putting those city assets, the sale of some of those city assets towards restoring our reserves. And to me, that makes very good financial sense. We we would have reduced the cost, overall cost to the city for for maintaining a facility, and we should put that money away for another rainy day. So I would support coming up with a definitive plan that when we sell city assets, we commit to putting those into the reserves.
My apologies. There's just no motion on the floor now.
I can't motion. Someone else has to make the motion.
Yeah, there just has to be a motion on the floor for discussion.
I'm going to make the motion to reconsider.
I'll second for discussion.
All right. So Kel, I have to take a vote on that, Kelly? So City, could you take the role, please, on reconsidering?
Yes, a motion to reconsider the budget. Alderman Brithwaite.
It's not a reconsider the budget.
It's a motion for discussion.
I can't hear. I'm having trouble hearing. Could somebody just please repeat what you just said? Sorry.
I I said I seconded for an opportunity to continue to discuss. There's nothing for creep on the on the table other than just the discussion at this point.
Discussion.
Then can we just call the question to reconsider?
Yeah, there'd have to be a motion to reconsider, some kind of motion on the floor.
She just gave.
Didn't make the motion to reconsider. But Peter, you're but Peter, you second it for discussion. I think Judy wants to call the question now.
Yeah.
Well, she's calling the question for the discussion.
For the discussion.
No, I'm calling the question on the motion.
Yeah, reconsider.
All right. City Clerk, can you take the role? This is the motion to reconsider.
Right, okay. Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman, when?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
No.
Alderman Sufferton. Alderman.
No.
Yeah, thank you. Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
And Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
All right. So the motion to consider passes six six to three.
Now we can have the discussion.
Now we can have the discussion. All right.
So what I guess, point of order, point of order. The vote to reconsider is to vote on the on the on the budget. It is not, that's what it is.
But it's still a discussion prior to the vote. So Alderman.
It's about it's about the budget. It's about the budget.
It's all about this budget. The whole conversation has been about the budget, and I think Alderman Win was making a point. And then we can continue the discussion about the budget that we've been talking about all night.
So is there any new discussion? Because I'm still a no.
I thought Alderman Alderman Fisk, I thought you were basically putting forward either an amendment or wanting some sort of commitment on the future of the reserve fund and how that would be funded.
I I I received the commitment from Alderman Win that there's support to have this discussion going forward. Nothing will amend the budget that we're voting on tonight.
So then I guess if we're looking to just continue the discussion on this budget, then a motion to.
No, 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 it's a not it's not a discussion on this budget. It's a discussion on a plan to refund or to put money into the reserves at a future date.
Right. I agree.
Then does Alderman Wilson?
And and so my understanding is after this, we're going to be putting together, our staff's going to be putting together a resolution to make an affirmative commitment along those lines.
Yes.
Should we then separate that commitment and vote on the budget?
It is already separated.
Yeah.
So does someone want to move?
I will move again. I will move the budget again in the amount of the twenty twenty one's budget for the City of Evanston in the amount of two hundred and ninety six million, one hundred and forty six thousand, one hundred and four dollars.
Second.
All right. And this is ordinance one ten dash zero dash twenty.
That's correct.
All right. Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
And I just do want to note that the other motion should be made into a motion and voted on by the council. The resolution.
No.
That's so that can be a.
It's a referral.
Yeah.
Ms. Anders.
That can be a referral. They just need the vote.
They could differ. Alderman Brithwaite. Alderman, when?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
No.
Alderman Sufferton.
No.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
And Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
All right. SP one ordinance one ten dash oh dash twenty approving the twenty twenty one fiscal year budget of the City of Evanston in the amount of two hundred and ninety six million, one hundred and forty six thousand, one hundred and four passes the City Council on a five to four vote. All right. Alderman Rainey, could you take us to SP two?
Yes, SP two is ordinance one one two oh twenty levying taxes in the City of Evanston in the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty one and ending December thirty one, twenty twenty one. Staff requests adoption of tax levy ordinance one twelve oh twenty, which levies the annual property tax for general operations, human services fund, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, police and fire pension funds, and the solid waste fund totaling thirty five million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars is extended, including three percent loss factor. This represents an increase of two point five percent over the two thousand nineteen levy of thirty four million, eight hundred fifty one thousand, eighteen dollars as extended. This is for action. I move approval.
Second. Let's let's get a second first, Hitesh. Is there a second?
I think this should be corrected, maybe.
Does anyone want to second this?
Second.
All right. Hitesh, what kind of adjustments need to be made based on SP one?
Right. So I'm in good evening, Mayor, again. Kate, can you? Do you have the numbers updated? Because we have made some changes to the tax levy in general fund and the Human Services Fund. So we'll have to update those numbers. And with the loss factor, that might have a little bit, yeah, more kind of. Okay.
So it's it's this number all the way down at the bottom here. How we usually sort of show our total tax levy, including debt service, a little bit different than once actually gets levied. The city tax levy in this ordinance does not include debt service. So this is the total net levy now adjusted with the changes we've made, and the gross levy is the thirty four million dollars. So I believe we would need an amendment to this new number.
So just so we're clear, Kate, you are amending the thirty five million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and eleven as extended to thirty four million, two hundred and sixteen, sixty nine, one hundred and twelve thousand. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So Alderman Rainey, could you move that amendment?
Yes. So did we have a second on this or no?
We did on the first one that you moved, yes.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I would like to move an amendment to ordinance one twelve oh twenty, and that is the the total amount is thirty four million, two hundred sixty nine thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars as extended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All all right.
I don't know what percentage that is.
Seeing seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you please take the role on the amendment? For SP two?
Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman, when?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
All right. So the amendment passes nine to nine to zero. Do we have to move the whole ordinance all over again, Kate? Or or?
Yes, you do.
All right. So, all right.
Ordinance, I'm, oh, should I do it?
Yep.
All right. I move ordinance one twelve oh twenty levying taxes in the City of Evanston for fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty one, and ending December thirty one, twenty twenty one in the amount of thirty four million, two hundred sixty nine thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. I move approval.
Second.
As amended.
Okay. All right. City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Yes. Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman, when?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite. I'm sorry, Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
All right. So SP two ordinance one twelve dash oh dash twenty levying taxes in the City of Evanston for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty one, to ending December thirty one, twenty twenty one, as amended, passes the City Council on a nine to zero vote. Kelly, before we go to SP three, I have a question. If numbers are changing here, is there a more efficient way that we can do? We can make this go through this or because it's typed out and it was noticed in these numbers, we have to go through the amendment process on each one of these?
If you want to pause, if you want to move the notice number in, and if someone wants to second that, yes, no, there's no other way to do it. It's second, and then someone can make a motion to amend, second, and then I vote on that.
Well, I know this one hasn't changed, so.
All right.
Ordinance one thirteen oh twenty levying taxes for the General Assistance Fund for fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty one, and ending December thirty one, twenty twenty one. This is in the amount of one million, three hundred forty thousand, two hundred and six dollars as extended, including three percent loss factor. This represents an increase of twenty point four percent over the two thousand nineteen levy of one million, one hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred and two dollars as extended. I move approval. This is for action.
Second.
All right. Hitesh and Kate, again, I know Alderman Rainey said none of those numbers change. I just want to confirm that with you.
Yes.
Okay. All right. City Clerk, could you please take the role on SP three?
Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman, when?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
All right. SP three ordinance one thirteen dash zero dash twenty levying taxes for the General Assistance Fund for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty one, and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty one, passes nine to zero. Alderman Rainey, can you move SP four?
Ordinance one one four oh twenty levying taxes for the library fund for fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty one, and ending December thirty one, twenty twenty one. Library Board requests adoption of tax levy ordinance one one four oh twenty, which leave which levies the annual property tax for the Evanston Public Library in the amount of seven million, four hundred seventy six thousand, two hundred and nine dollars as extended, including three percent loss factor. This represents no increase over the twenty nineteen levy. I move approval. This is for action.
Second.
All right. Hitesh, just want to confirm no changes to these numbers?
Correct.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, Clerk Reed, could you take the role on SP four?
Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman, when?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
All right. On a nine to zero vote, ordinance one fourteen dash oh dash twenty levying tax for the library fund for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty one, and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty one, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Could you take move SP five, Alderman?
Ordinance one one five oh twenty levying taxes for the special service area number six for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty one, ending December thirty one, twenty twenty one, which levies the annual property tax in the amount of two hundred and twenty one thousand, two hundred and twenty seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty five dollars as extended, including a loss factor of three percent. This represents no increase over the twenty twenty nine, twenty nineteen levy as extended. This is for action. I move approval.
Second.
All right. Hitesh, again, I no numbers here change, correct?
Yes.
All right. So Hitesh, as we go through these, I want you to chime in after we get the second to just let now if something's changing, okay? City Clerk, could you move SP five, please? SP five, please?
I cannot move it, but I can call the roll on.
Thank you, Clerk Reed.
Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right. SP five ordinance one fifteen dash oh dash twenty passes the city council on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Rainey, can you move SP six?
Next item is I move adoption of tax levy ordinance one one six oh twenty, which levies annual property tax for special service area number seven in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred forty-four dollars as extended, including loss factor of three percent. This represents no increase over the two thousand nineteen levy of one hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred forty-four dollars as extended. This is for action. I move approval.
Second.
All right. City Clerk, could you please take the role on SP six?
Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
SP six ordinance one sixteen dash oh dash twenty passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Rainey, could you move SP seven, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of tax levy ordinance one one seven oh twenty, which levies the annual property tax for special service area number eight in the amount of sixty thousand two hundred dollars, sixty-two thousand six dollars as extended, including a loss factor of three percent. This represents no increase over the two thousand nineteen levy of the same amount as extended. This is for action. I move approval.
Second.
All right. City Clerk, could you please take the role on SP seven?
Yes. Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk, I'm sorry, and Alderman Fleming as well.
Aye.
All right. SP seven ordinance one seventeen dash oh dash twenty passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to zero vote. Alderman Rainey, could you move SP eight, please?
Yes. I move adoption of tax levy ordinance one eighteen oh twenty, which levies annual property tax for special service area number nine in the amount of five hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars, six hundred and ten thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars as extended, including a loss factor of three percent. This represents no increase over the two thousand nineteen levy of the same amount as extended. This is for action, and I move approval.
Second.
Second.
All right. City Clerk, could you please take the role on SP eight?
Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman Nguyen?
Aye, sorry about that.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye. Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right. SP eight ordinance one eighteen dash oh dash twenty passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Rainey, could you please move SP nine?
Yes. Our staff recommends the council adopt resolution one twenty R twenty, which authorizes the manager to sign the memorandum of understanding with Cook County to house city staff and Evanston residents during COVID-19 pandemic. This is for action. I move approval.
Second.
All right. City Clerk, could you please take the role on SP nine?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Rue Simmons, I'm sorry, and Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right. SP nine, resolution one twenty dash R dash twenty, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Rainey, could you move SP ten?
SP ten, this has to do with CDBG CV funding for food insecurity. Our staff recommends, and COVID-19 food insecurity team recommend, that the city council approve CDBG CV funding of up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Kurt's Cafe to address food insecurity related to the COVID-19 pandemic, up to one hundred and twenty thousand to procure food, and up to thirty thousand for labor and delivery costs. This will provide approximately fifteen hundred boxes of food, each of which will feed a family of four. Food boxes will be distributed via pop-up pantries and high-needs neighborhoods, estimated at five hundred boxes per month for those months. The city received a million five hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred and seventy dollars in CARES Act CDBG CV funding in two allocations to address the needs of homelessness and unstablely housed families and individuals and other impacts of the coronavirus. Six hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred ninety-six is budgeted for public service, including food assistance. Approval of one hundred and fifty thousand for food assistance will lead three hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred ninety-six to be allocated to eligible public service activities. This is for action, and I move approval.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
This is really amazing. I mean, this is quite a project.
All right, great. Seeing none, City Clerk, could you take the role on SP ten?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right. SP ten, approval of CDBG CV funding to address food insecurity passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. That completes the special orders of business this evening. We're now going to move on to the consent agenda. I understand that Administration of Public Works met, had a committee meeting early this evening about planning and development, did not. Therefore, I'm going to ask if we do the consent agenda on... We're going to do the consent agenda on, we'll do the consent agenda, I'm sorry, as we always do, on all items. If Alderman would like to identify any items that they would like to remove, please take a few minutes and let me know what those are.
P three.
A three?
E three.
P three, P three, yes. Okay.
We need to take off A four. That's the vehicle issue.
Okay.
A six was taken off in committee, but is it necessary now?
Taken off in committee, so it's not on the, it's not on our agenda here.
No, it was passed APW. A six was passed.
Okay, but we're going to take it off here.
R one?
Is that, okay. R one is off? All right. If not, then we remove four items from the consent agenda, which will be discussed individually. That's A four, A six, P is in Paul three, and R one. So Alderman Rue Simmons, if you would move then the consent agenda?
I move for approval the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Seeing no discussion, Clerk Reed, could you please take the role on the consent agenda?
Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right. The consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. We're now going to go to the items removed. Alderman Simmons, if you could move A four, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A four, staff recommends city council approval for the purchase of twenty vehicles for various departments. Purchases include one vehicle for Parks and Rec, seven vehicles for Public Works, seven vehicles for Police Department, one vehicle for Fire Department, four for administrative services, stationary vehicular lift for administrative services, Fleet Division. Funding for purchase of twenty vehicles, one stationary lift in total of the amount of one million four hundred forty-one thousand five hundred dollars will come from the two thousand twenty-one Equipment Replacement Automotive Equipment Fund with a proposed two thousand twenty-one budget of two million dollars. In addition, funding for two hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents will be from the solid waste fund with a proposed twenty-one budget of four hundred forty thousand dollars. I move this for approval.
Second.
Okay, this is open for discussion?
I'd like to move that we amend it for the prior discussion. So I move that we amend vehicle purchases to remove one bus and nine of the Explorer vehicles, resulting in a new total for the purchases in the amount of one million eighteen thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay. All right. City Manager, just want to confirm that's all correct to you? That amendment?
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further discussion, City Clerk, could you please take the role on the amendment?
Yes. Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right. So the amendment passes nine to zero. All right. There was a motion that was seconded for A four. Any further discussion? All right. City Clerk, could you please take, or actually, Alderman Wilson, can you just move A four as amended?
I move that we pass A four, the purchase of the twenty vehicles, and a stationary vehicle lift as amended.
All right. City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Yes. Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right. A four, the vehicle purchases passes as amended on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Rue Simmons, could you take us to A six?
Absolutely. A six, staff recommends city council adoption of resolution one eighteen R twenty, authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement for actionable pricing for electric energy supply for ninety-three city electric accounts. This is for action.
Second.
All right. Open discussion? City Manager, I think there was a change that we saw today on this. Is that why it was pulled off?
We did get new pricing, or pricing for the electric aggregation, we can only get on the day of. Pricing has been incorporated, and that amended, the amendment was placed on the website. So I don't know if there's anything we need to do particular to the item. I think it can just pass, or it can be voted on as provided.
Okay. All right. So with that, seeing no discussion, with that understanding that the pricing is as provided today and posted on the city's website, City Clerk, could you please take the role on A six?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle? Ald, I can hear you, but I can see that it's not. Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
All right. So A six, resolution one eighteen dash R dash twenty, authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement for actionable pricing for electric energy supply as provided today in the memo posted on the city's website, passes the city council on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Nguyen, could you move P three?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move ordinance one oh nine oh twenty, amending the zoning map to rezone nineteen hundred Sherman Avenue from the R six general residential district to the C one A commercial mixed-use district and grant special use permit for a planned development at nineteen hundred Sherman Avenue.
Second.
All right. So this item's open for discussion. Alderman Fisk?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be abstaining from the discussion and the vote. A longtime friend of mine and treasurer of my twenty twenty-one reelection campaign is employed by Camero's, and to ensure no appearance of a conflict, or, and to ensure public trust, I'm going to be abstaining and not discussing.
All right. Thank you, Alderman.
May I say one other thing, Mr. Mayor? Previously, I-
Can I say something?
So Cecile, just so you're aware, so right now, this is just a discussion of the city council members. The public, unless called upon, isn't part of this discussion at this point. That was during public comment for the public. So Alderman Fisk?
Yes, I, Director Niden, to reiterate what Scott Magnum said at the last meeting regarding Commissioner Lindwall's abstention and lack of participation at committee.
Thank you. Welcome, panel.
Good evening. Yes, there was a question about whether Commissioner Lindwall participated in the discussion at the planning commission. She did abstain and recused herself from that discussion. Another question that had come up also was the participation of a private developer, and I believe there is a representative from the Housing Authority of Cook County to disclose that one percent ownership interest.
Thank you. I think that would be good. That did come up a couple times. So if Rich Minocchio or someone from the Housing Authority of Cook County is here and could address that?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. We appreciate your consideration of our development. Just, just, by way of background, the Illinois state statute requires that a public housing authority have a private partner. So that is why we are undertaking this. The housing authority is going to be at least a ninety-nine percent owner, and- And while we do not have a signed agreement yet with the private developer, the developer that we are working with and has been very helpful to us during the planning process is the John Buck Company.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions? I know we have Rich Minocchio here. Are there any other questions that the council has for him or his team on this project? I know they didn't speak at public comment. Okay. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I just, there was comments made about engagement of the residents in the building as well as, I think someone made a comment this time or last time about Evanston residents having priority. Are those just two things that we can discuss so we have it on the record?
So the issue of the residents at 1900 Sherman now, you know, a few years ago, as many members know, we, we fully rehabilitated that property and provided new, basically new apartments for the residents. We've had several meetings with the residents, the last being on September 30th. So everybody is, is fully aware in the building of what's happening. Everybody in the building thrilled? Probably not. But certainly we, there hasn't been a, you know, everybody seems very happy with their living conditions now. And at least to me, have expressed support for what we're doing to provide more affordable housing in Evanston. To the second question, the issue of priority for Evanston residents, certainly it's our intent to market heavily and, and, and the beginning stages of this in Evanston. I mean, that's always been our intent. You know, as I've mentioned before to the council members, we came to Evanston because of the capacity that you have, the diversity of the community and the leadership. So we fully intend to lease to Evanston residents. The reason why we cannot give an outright guarantee to those 34 apartments, the low income apartments, is because I intend to attach project-based vouchers to those apartments. And by doing so, we further increase affordability by making the resident pay only 30% of their income for rent. So if the, you know, if the resident makes $1,000 a month, they pay 300. They don't pay the 1,400. So we are, we are increasing affordability by a large degree. And with the attachment of project-based vouchers, there comes fair housing laws that make it problematic if we were to, to issue a exclusive local preference for Evanston. You know, we've, we've, and it's been alluded to here tonight. We did, we did also provide vouchers for the prop, the project in Alderman Rainey's ward, Howard Street. And those project-based vouchers, just like all the project-based vouchers that we issue countywide, do not have that specific local preference. But what I can say is through marketing and just because of the nature of the real estate market, people want to generally live close to where they're at now. The vast majority of our project-based voucher holders, upwards of 80%, either come from the town that we are, we are attaching the vouchers to or from a, from a neighboring town. So while we cannot give an absolute preference for the, the very, the low income units, we can give you, give the council assurances that in our long history of doing this, the vast majority of folks do come from the town. Now, we have though agreed, because it doesn't, the middle, the middle market units do not carry the same issue. We have agreed to utilize the Affordable Requirements Ordinance list that the city of Evanston has and to give those residents on that list preference for the 17 moderately priced apartments.
One more question then for Director Niden. I literally think I just forgot it. I literally just forgot my question. Never mind. Sorry.
We'll come back, we'll come back to you. He's not going anywhere. We'll come back to you. What other questions, comments people have?
Sorry. Okay. So Johanna, can you speak to our Affordable Housing Ordinance? I know there's been conversation whether this building exceeds or doesn't exceed. So can you speak to the affordable housing units, not the middle market units, but the actual affordable housing units and how that fits in with our code?
I'll have Sarah jump on here as well, but the building is compliant with our inclusionary housing ordinance.
But does it exceed our ordinance or is it just compliant with our standard?
I believe it complies. Sarah, do you want to chime in?
Sarah's fallen asleep.
No, I'm here.
It's 11 o'clock. Oh, there you are, Sarah. Okay. I was about to fall asleep. All right.
I haven't fallen asleep. I just can't get, I think my computer did. So the, actually, this exceeds the inclusionary housing ordinance requirement. This is a public entity and had, there will be some public funding in it in the form of the vouchers. So they have a 20% requirement which they are meeting. But the IHO requirement is for the affordability to be at 60% of area median. The 34 units, the 20% are at 50% AMI and actually are much more deeply affordable because of the project-based voucher support that Rich Minocchio just explained. So it significantly exceeds the affordability required by the inclusionary housing ordinance.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. I think it's always important that we have the correct information out. I will say that I, I plan to support this. I realize that there are people who are opposed to it and I understand that. You know, too tall or too close or it's changed since it first started. I'm always very clear with my residents that particularly on buildings and developments, I, I don't usually weigh in until the end because they do change a lot. By the time they come to us as an idea, they, they tend to change a lot for a lot of different reasons. So that is something I think, Manager Niden, we just have to make sure we're really keeping people up to date. I don't know if we still use that little tracking system we used to have online so people can follow planned developments. But I think it is important that people are, we put the information out for people to know what projects look like from beginning to end. But we do need the affordable housing. I think it would be great if it was shorter and not as close and all those other things. But considering we are not being asked to put any money into this development and that it is going to provide 34 units that I don't know where else we would get 34 units from, I'm going to provide it. I don't know that we have people to fill the middle market. I don't know that we have people to fill the, what people are calling luxury or high-end development units in the building. But my concern is for the affordable units that we definitely need in town. And so I am going to support the project. Mr. Minocchio, I just hope that you continue to be in touch with the residents who live in the current building. I think that the lady who spoke about them having to kind of go work through the link and, you know, whatever that construction pressure put on them as residents, that we're mindful to not burden them any more than need be. And then I would like to be updated on what the parking situation is. I realize that everyone doesn't have a car or won't need a space. But when we talk about seniors, you know, I don't want to put them two blocks away and having them schlepping groceries and such. So I would like an update, Johanna and Mr. Minocchio, on what the parking situation looks like when we get, you know, further down the road here.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, City Clerk, could you please take the role on P3? Ordinance 109-0-20, amending the zoning map to rezone 1900 Sherman Avenue from R6 General Residential District to the C1A Commercial Mixed Use District and granting a special use permit for a planned development at 1900 Sherman Avenue. This has been moved and seconded.
Yes. Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk? I know you're accusing.
She's abstaining.
Yeah.
Okay. So P3 ordinance 109-0-20 passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to zero vote with Alderman Fisk abstaining. All right. Alderman Ru Simmons, could you move R1, please?
Sure. R1, city council recommends adoption of ordinance 1020, setting compensation for the Evanston City Council. This ordinance was held for action at the November 9, 2020 meeting to November 23, 2020 meeting. I move for act, for approval.
Second.
All right. This is open for a discussion. Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I think I sent a note separately to members of the council explaining that I was going to ask for an amendment. And my amendment is as follows, and I sent a copy of my amendment to everybody, but I want to read it out loud. My amendment is to the compensation ordinance that aldermen eligible only for single coverage may select to receive a cash amount equal to the city's premium costs for their single PPO option. This affords the single alderman the opportunity to shop for individual insurance on the private market that is tailored more to his or her needs. That's, that's my amendment. In other words, instead of forcing a single alderman to use the city insurance, that amount of money that would be used for the city to purchase insurance, they'd be allowed to use that money to shop for their own insurance outside. Because I have found that I could do much better buying insurance outside of the city that would include also dental and other, other pieces that my insurance now does not include.
All right.
That's my amendment.
Is there a second to that?
I move my amendment.
Is there a second? Okay. So that has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Fleming?
I just wanted to see if we, and Alderman Rainey, thanks for the information. Do you have a price for that? As it stands now, I realize our insurance costs.
Whatever, what, no, I, I don't know the price. Whatever the PPO premium is for a single person. It would be, it would, you don't know what your insurance is going to be for your family.
No, right. I was just trying to, because Erica last time mentioned, you know, our budgeting and stuff. So I just wanted to just get an idea.
But it's whatever it's going to be. It doesn't matter. You know, it doesn't, because you don't know. I mean, you don't know if there's going to even be a single alderman elected or if there might be all family aldermen elected.
I understand. But I, what my question is, and maybe Erica can tell us that right now, what is that cost then? I realize it's cost changes every year and I don't know who's going to take it. But I think if we're voting on compensation and a cost, we should be clear at least of what the cost is now, understanding that that's going to fluctuate.
Well, this would be, this would be i- in terms of aldermen on the Evanston City Council, it would be the lease cost next to Alderman Revelle, who takes no insurance. So it'd be a single alderman at cost. That's all.
I believe the number right now is approximately $650, somewhere in the neighborhood. But this is not an increase, as I understand what you're saying. This is just replacing what we would normally pay.
Yeah. Yeah. No, exactly, exactly that. Yeah. It's no increase, nothing. Yeah. It's just, it has nothing to do, believe me, for equal pay for equal work.
All right. So seeing no discussion, further discussion on that amendment? City Clerk, could you take the role on the amendment?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson? Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk? I'm sorry, Alderman Fisk. I'm sorry.
Sorry, aye.
Thank you.
I didn't catch Alderman Wilson's vote?
Aye.
All right. All right. So the amendment passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to one vote. All right. Alderman Rainey, would you like to move R1 as amended?
Okay. I move R1 as amended. Second.
All right. So this is R1, ordinance 103-0-20. Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you please take the role?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson? I'm sorry, Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So R1 ordinance 103-0-20, setting compensation for members of the Evanston City Council, passes as amended on a nine to zero vote. All right. We're now going to move to call of the wards.
Mayor, can you have a quick question? I'm sorry. I, I realize I kind of zoned out for a minute. I voted wrong for something. Can I change it or should I just? I mean, I could leave it. It's not going to change the outcome of the vote, but for the record, if you change it, I sent the clerk a message, but you didn't get back to me. So I wasn't sure how to do it procedurally.
I'm not sure.
I can leave. All right. Fine. I'll just, Kelly, do you have a suggestion?
Yeah, you can change your vote as long as it doesn't affect the outcome. I think there's.
Doesn't affect the outcome. It'll just be.
You can just note it for the record.
Why don't you, why don't you go ahead and note it right now?
All right. I meant to vote no to SP2. I just, I just lost track of the votes there. Which was the tax levy for the pension.
Got it. Okay. So SP2 then, for the record, ordinance 112-0-20 passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to one vote with Alderman Fleming voting no.
Thank you.
All right. The call of the wards. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick acknowledgement to all the residents that participate this past budget season. Definitely the most difficult year that I have been on, on council. And that includes back in 2011, just coming out of the recession. I also want to encourage all of our residents as we are going through the holidays to pay attention to the governor's stay-at-home order. Thanksgiving is definitely my most favorite holiday. And this year I will be celebrating with just my immediate family and praying that others do the same as a way of managing our COVID numbers. The second Thursday in December, we will host a second ward meeting as we wrap up the year. And then for those that I will not have an opportunity to see, hopefully have a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wen?
Yes. I, I want to echo Alderman Braithwaite to say I wish everyone a happy and safe and healthy Thanksgiving 2020 so that we all can have a happy, safe and very healthy Thanksgiving 21. It's a relatively small sacrifice to make in the overall picture of this. And I hope everybody recognizes that, that there is light at the end of the tunnel and we just have to keep staying strong during all of this. I also want to alert the third ward that I will be having Zoom office hours. So watch for.
I also want to alert the third ward that I will be having Zoom office hours, so watch for a notice on my e-newsletter to sign up for a time slot during my Zoom office hours. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you, thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Wilson?
I also want to wish everyone a nice Thanksgiving. Challenging times indeed. And I just want to, I guess, put a reminder out there. The budget's really, it's a planning tool, but we still have a lot of work to do with regard to policy over the next year. So the budget doesn't set our, our policies in stone. In fact, far from it. So I'm looking forward to the next year and accomplishing a lot and, and doing a lot of work with regard to our policy. And, you know, just to, for, for all the residents to be mindful of that and to continue to give us input and participate in what we're doing because, you know, it's through the course of the year when we're setting these policies. And, you know, it, it can't just all be at the budget time. It's, you know, during the course of the year that we're actually getting most of the work done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Ruth Simmons?
Thank you, and thank you to the 11 youth that attended their first NLC city summit this past week. It had been a three year goal that we get them there and we had residents from Evanston Township High School in Haven from six of our nine wards. Next year, we're going to hope for all nine wards that attended a three day conference and they did a fantastic job. So I want to say thank you to our stellar staff. Audrey Thompson and Director Lawrence Hemingway, as well as our partner in this initiative, Kim Holmes Ross from Cradle to Career and to the leadership of Cradle to Career to extending your service in partnership with the City of Evanston. The, the young people have done an amazing job and they're going to prepare to come and give us a report on everything they learned and what their role will be in leadership in our city. And so with that, I'm current chair of rules, but I will be making a referral. I'll put on the agenda that we establish a youth commission or council or committee. I think maybe we leave that up to them for them to decide what they'd like to be called. But just thank you for all that were involved. Thank you to Senator Laura Fine for financially sponsoring this effort so that the youth can have really official sweaters with the logo and everything. So really excited about that. And then to Alderman Brithwaite's point, please enjoy your holiday and be safe. Safety is a priority. And have a wonderful, blessed Thanksgiving. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Saffron.
Your turn.
Alderman Revelle?
I'd just like to remind seventh ward residents. I'm having a seventh ward meeting on Wednesday, December 2nd at 7:00 PM by Zoom naturally. And in the meanwhile, I wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, happy and safe.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you. I want to wish all my colleagues on the council a wonderful Thanksgiving. Hopefully it won't be too lonely. And I want to tell our staff, some staff, how grateful I am to all you do. And also, the whole idea of being safe and wearing your mask and staying distance and washing your hands. I, I really believe, I, I, maybe I'm too hopeful, but I really think this year, coming year, we're going to come out of it with a new president and a new attitude and great help. I think this is going to be a year we're going to be very thankful for. So have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving, stay safe, but particularly for those people who I want to be mindful of the people who are outside this Thanksgiving, people who have, you know, had total life changes during this pandemic and haven't had a chance to, you know, really come together in any kind of way. Please, as neighbors, just watch out for each other. We have, Amita has an emergency helpline that you can access, I believe, through 311 now. So as, as you're celebrating, please be mindful that everyone is not, this is not a joyous time for everyone. And for those who are finding themselves in a space where they're not joyous, please reach out for help. The city has resources, the county has resources. But particularly as we're sheltering in place, I, I know a lot of people are no longer in place who maybe started the year off in a place. So just that my thoughts are with them and that I hope that you really know that you know, people do care about you and there is help available if you need it.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Alderman Rainey, it is going to be a better year coming ahead and I'm very, very excited about that. And I hope that will bring some, an influx of some positivity, if not money into our community to help our, to help our, our businesses. I want to remind everyone that we're having a first board meeting, our regularly scheduled quarterly meeting on Tuesday, December 1st, and that is a week from tomorrow, 7 to 8:30 PM on Zoom. And we will be posting the agenda online. We'd like everybody to sign up online and save us some money and looking forward to a good discussion there. So again, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All right, we do not have executive decisions. City Clerk, could you please take the role to adjourn?
Yes, Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Clerk. The Monday, November 23rd meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.